A workshop, so very informal.
Good, thank you. Good evening, everybody. I think maybe to help the process a little bit, maybe we can do some introductions. I'm Anne Bacham, Parks Director, Public Works Director for the city.
Anna Brown, I'm with the Minnehawke Creek Watership District, and I'm just with you for the first part of this meeting.
Tom Gregory, City Council.
Tom Vogt, City Council.
Tom Strickland, City Council.
Lori Hokenen, City Manager.
Kara Garin, City Engineer.
Bob Wolf, Planning Commission.
Todd Trueter, Planning Commission.
Ben Landhouser, Community Development Director.
Tenet June, Park and Rec Committee Member.
Judy Agerson, Park and Rec.
Kirsten Pedersen, Park and Rec Committee.
John Carlson, Park and Rec/Planning House.
Amber Hudler, Park and Rec.
Karen Smith, City Engineer.
Perfect, thank you. So this meeting, we're going to try to wrap up fairly quickly because we do have a second meeting at seven. But it will certainly leave time for questions if people have them at the end. Just to kind of give a brief background on this. Back in May of this year, the City Council authorized the execution of a cooperative agreement with the Watership District for the acquisition of property on the west side of Lake Wasserman. They also authorized the execution of a purchase agreement to purchase the property from the Watershed District over a five-year period of time for a time yet to be determined, depending upon when final plans and part of the scope of services is completed. So the joint project or the joint agreement allows the Watershed District to provide some water quality for Lake Wasserman, and it also allows the city to eventually construct a park yet to be determined within the upland areas. In advance of those agreements, the city and the district worked together to come up with a plan that would encompass what we needed to do in order to complete a scope of services for both parties. Again, the district with the natural resources piece, the city with the park piece, laying out a design, concepts, et cetera. Back in early this summer, the plan that you see before you was developed by the Watershed District and went before the Park and Rec Committee and also the City Council, just as a concept. And from this then, we have now are planning to move ahead with a scope of services that kind of defines the project, lays out timelines, public input and open house, provides schematic design for the park. It also will give the Watershed District the information that it needs for wetland restoration, stormwater best management practices, and then enhancements to water quality, and then also for us, estimated costs for the final park design. So Anna has been working diligently with the two firms that are will be providing the scope of services to both entities. So we've invited Anna to come along to talk a little bit about the scope of services. And tonight, there was no formal action being taken. Interaction, comments, suggestions would be much appreciated as we roll through this process. And then the final scope of services would go back to the Park and Rec Committee for a formal vote, and then also to the City Council, and also to the Watershed District. So we've got a lot of different entities with their hands here. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Anna.
Good, thank you, Ann. Yeah, so I'm with the Watershed District. I'm the Planner Project Manager in charge of the whole six-mile halfstead base of Watershed area. So we've been working a lot with the City of Victoria over the last couple of years, really. And back in, I think it was 2014, we identified Lake Wasserman as a priority of both the Watershed District and the city for restoration. So we're really excited about this. This is sort of a first opportunity to achieve some of that restoration on Lake Wasserman. I haven't prepared a formal presentation. What I'd like to do is just walk us through the scope of services that was in your packet for tonight. And I'm primarily here to answer any questions and again, take suggestions about how you would like to see the park design process unfold. We're tentatively planning on getting all of those approvals in early November. I think the first meeting of both of our agencies in November. So this is an opportunity to have a discussion and make any adjustments in advance of those November timelines. So this phase of work in the draft's open year packet is really the second of what will be a three-phase design process. So the first step was sort of to facilitate developing that cooperative agreement, and that was to develop this concept design that we have here. This concept was developed with Hart Howerton, who is the landscape architect that we will continue to work with through this design process. The phase that we're moving into now is what we're calling the preliminary design, and it's called that as well within the cooperative agreement. The goal of this preliminary design process is to allow the city and district to reach agreement on sort of the basic park layout, the programming within the park, so whatever the recreational amenities will ultimately be, and develop some preliminary design for that as well. We'll develop some of the planting plans and then also the restoration design, which I'll detail a little bit more later. And then sort of outside of the scope of services, which is sort of what the consultants will be doing with us, we'll also be working across staff at both agencies to develop sort of a funding plan. So we'll be detailing grant opportunities that we might pursue through this process and reaching agreement otherwise on cost and funding for the park. We'll develop a phased implementation program. The park design is pretty big, so we'll talk about, you know, what we can do first to kind of get people on site, get people to have that access to Wasserman early on, and maybe some of the bigger elements where we're looking longer term for when we can align that funding. And we'll also be developing sort of an operations plan for the site. Following preliminary design, as Ann alluded to, within the cooperative agreement, we've essentially said the city is responsible for implementing the elements that are related to sort of the upland park improvement, so some of the recreational elements. And then the district will be implementing the restoration side of things. So once we have an agreed upon preliminary design, district and city will close on the property as outlined in the cooperative agreement. And then both the city and the district would then sort of finish out the design for their respective pieces and then move into implementation. We don't anticipate that we'll sort of go back to our offices and not talk anymore. Well, we'll keep collaborating. We'll keep working together on that implementation plan. But that's just sort of the essential duties as they're outlined in the cooperative agreement. So I'm going to... Are there any questions about sort of those three phases before I go into the scope of work? Okay, so again, the sort of goal of this phase of work is to take that concept plan and develop a more robust plan that where we're developing a stronger sense of the site, restraints and opportunities on site, the programming, and then we'll get specific layout. You know, if you look at this now, it's sort of rough dotted lines on a map. We'll sort of verify locations for the elements, like the trail, the buildings and all of that. The sort of early on in discussions about the scope, staff in the district felt that we had gotten a really positive response on the concept plan. And so we're not proposing to reimagine the concept, rather to sort of reaffirm what we've built there, examine the site and make sure everything that we're proposing works in space and makes sense, and to just sort of take it to the next level. So and then the end point of this design is that we'll have essentially final layout. We'll have sort of final decisions on programming. We will not have specific design of structures. That would come in the next phase. So structures being primarily any sort of restroom facilities, buildings or overlooks. So we'd have the sort of massing and location, but not the actual design there. And then we also wouldn't be preparing the actual bid packets to bring in from design to construction. That would come as well in later phases. So the scope itself is divided into basically three buckets of work. The first being just sort of the data collection and site investigation. The next one being the pond treatment plan. So when I say the pond, I'm talking about this large six-acre pond on site here. And then the third being the actual park design. As far as the data collection and site investigation, there's nothing too exciting or interesting there. We'll just develop a really robust understanding of the site, doing survey work. We're in the process now of completing the wetland delineation, so we'll know where the final boundaries are there. And we will be doing some preliminary soil borings to determine loading capacity on site. That'll help tell us, you know, where the trail here can be trail versus boardwalk as it goes through the wetlands. And then that'll also help tell us, you know, where it makes the most sense to site the buildings. The next piece is the actual treatment plan for the pond. So that's sort of the second bucket of work. The... We know that this pond is a large source of phosphorus loading into Lake Wasserman. So one of the primary goals for the district is to utilize alum, which essentially will bind the phosphorus and prevent it from moving from the pond into the lake. So for this piece of work, we will basically develop sort of a full plan for how to employ alum over the next year and then into sort of a five to 10-year window. So the district has budgeted for the first alum application in 2018. So that's something that we could implement as soon as the spring, and we'll be implementing by fall of 2018.
So has the source of that pollution been contained now properly, or is it reduced?
So what we did in the preliminary feasibility was figure out whether there is still phosphorus coming in, or whether it's primarily an internal loading issue where it's actually the stored phosphorus in the pond that's continuing to release. And we found that a vast majority of it is the latter, so it's actually stored in the sediment and continually releasing. There probably are still some watershed sources, and we anticipate that as, you know, the western area continues to develop, a lot of those will be diminished. But we made sure that, you know, using alum today would make sense and would make a significant impact in that preliminary feasibility.
What would it be a rough cost to annually to do a treatment of that, like you're talking about?
So I believe that the first application was somewhere in the $40,000 to $50,000 range. But then the subsequent applications are less, probably more like $10,000, and sort of diminishes over time. So that first application is more substantial and at higher cost. We'd probably be recommending that we then follow up within a year or two years with another smaller one. And then you just sort of continue to space it out over time till eventually, maybe you're doing maintenance every five, 10 years, but you probably don't need to sort of continue to apply alum. And that would all be incorporated into district capital costs.
Is alum the only thing you're going to do to the pond?
It is. We're looking... We'll also examine the wetland area, the vegetated area, and make some vegetative improvements. We'll look at whether those improvements will have water quality benefit, but they'll certainly have broader ecological benefits, so we'd be implementing those. But as far as the pond goes, yes, really the only thing that you can do, and that would be desirable to do and is efficient to do, is that alum.
Is there a reason why, say dredging, just to eliminate the source, wouldn't be considered? And then I think would give the pond more capacity for future kind of absorption, if you will?
I think with the sort of size of the pond and the depth of the contaminant, if you will, the phosphorus, there's some risk that removing... By, you know, dredging, you're actually stirring up and exacerbating the issue more than you're making an improvement. So we did ask our engineers to kind of look at that, and they said that they would still recommend alum. I don't think that this pond, because the pond is a classified wetland, it probably wouldn't ever be directly in stormwater management. But if down the line that were to occur, we could sort of examine capacity. But I think that, you know, as the area develops, you'd be looking more at regional ponds within those developed areas rather than directing stormwater untreated into this pond.
How deep is the water?
No, I don't recall off the top of my head, but I can follow up with you on that. We've taken depth, and we, you know, we have... We've got depth throughout the pond. I'm just sort of blanking on the actual depth right now.
Is the pond stagnant, or is there a water flow in and out implicitly at least?
I believe that when it releases phosphorus, it's releasing as overland flow through that wetland. So it does under high water conditions, but it's... And I'm not sure how frequently they occur, but that is sort of the principal transport into the lake there.
My revelation is that there is a pulver or something, isn't there, that does come across 43 into there?
There is, yes.
So it may be from another wetland?
I think that there is a... I think... I know that there's some drainage coming from this site here. And then I think that there's also drainage coming from the north. That drainage to the north is coming from development where it is being treated before entering the pond.
So other than the phosphorus, is there any other concerns like nitrogen or anything else that we can look forward to treating in the future for that pond? Or is there any long-term effect of alum being bound to the phosphorus and staying in that, or moving onto the lake?
I don't believe there are any risks associated with the alum. It essentially just converts it from dissolved phosphorus to sediment-bound. And it, once it's sort of bound to that alum, it won't be transporting into the lake. But I believe as far as other contaminants go, that's our principal target. Maybe there will be secondary benefits.
So the key is to lock it down and keep it in place inside that pond, then it could be dredged out sometime if you found it necessary?
It could, sure.
I was just worrying about the transfer of that because if it's sediment-bound, then it's going to be disturbed by carp, eaten by carp, and other birds eat the carp, and so on and so forth. It's a vicious circle. It can be, but I can see clearing the product. If it's going to stay encapsulated and clearing the product out of the pond, that would be a long-term effect. Where if you're not clear about it short-term, it's going to cause another problem in the future.
Yeah, and I believe alum is quite inert. It's essentially an iron compound. So there's very... Well, I don't know of any risk associated with it. It has been used in water bodies that do have more active fisheries communities as well, so.
What is the product when the chemical reaction takes place and the alum is bound to the phosphorus? What is... Is it like dirt, or what? I mean, what is it?
Really testing my science here. I'm not sure. But I can, you know, I think there are resources out there that I can point you to to explain a little bit more about the mechanism that how it works.
I do feel that wastewater treatment facilities uses it a lot in applications.
Yeah, even regular water treatments do it for clarity to clear the water. So it just, it doesn't stay bound forever, is what I've read. I kind of investigated this part of it because I've heard of these treatments before around portions of... I think it was in Chicago or something. They were talking about it. And it can re-release the phosphorus after a period of time. It does have a breakdown period. But like I said, if our goal is to remove it and have it dredged eventually, it's cost-effective. And if we know it's not going to transfer to the lake, I don't see it being a problem in the future.
Right. Yeah, and we're, I mean, at the Watership District, we're always looking at the tails of our projects. So we'll make, you know, we'll be monitoring if we see things resuspending, if we see it re-releasing. You know, we'll be monitoring and note to make another application or to evaluate the situation. So why don't I move into a little bit more of the design process? Because I'm sure there will be questions about that as well. So like I said, we'll be still working with Hart Howerton, who developed this concept plan. And then the engineers that we're bringing on board are our district engineers, Wank Associates. I've handed out a little sort of fact sheet and just some slides I pulled together with images of two of the parks that we have completed at the Watershed District, both in the Hopkins-St. Louis Park area, the Minnehawke Creek Greenway. And both of those ones are highlighted pictures, the Cottageville Park and the Minnehawke Preserve, were also completed by that Hart Howerton-Wank Associates team. So you can sort of look through those at your pleasure. We've had a really good experience working with them and created some really unique spaces coming out of that. So the design process that we'll be going through, it's relatively condensed. We'll be moving in, we'll be getting sort of our final preliminary design by sort of end of January, potentially into February. And the process roughly will begin with a site survey and walkthrough that will be... It'll be attended by the district, district staff, city staff, and the consultants. And essentially what they'll do, the consultants will have visited the site and sort of verified the layout that we have here in advance. They'll stake out some of the major elements on site. So we will sort of walk through and see where the trail is being placed, where they're proposing to create outlooks, where they'll be proposing to place buildings. And it's just sort of an opportunity to kind of ground truth this layout and make sure that it actually works and that there aren't major hurdles, like, you know, a building or something like along those lines. Once we've kind of used that process to verify this site layout, we'll move into the sort of public participation piece. What we're proposing at this stage is that the public participation piece will focus on informing the actual programmatic elements of the design. So questions like, how do we want to access the shoreline? You know, do we want to have a kayak access point? Do we want to have a fishing pier? You know, which of the sort of proposed elements in the concept plan are actually kind of along the lines of what the public wants? And, you know, also are we just not thinking of something that the public would really be interested in? In terms of programming, we also sort of want to think about the level of use. Is this just a sort of summer access use, or is this something year-round? That'll really help inform kind of building design, whether we're just talking about, you know, fair weather use. Are there any sort of special event accommodations that we might want to make? Or we sort of... Do the shelters need to target a certain number of people for some type of event that might be held on site? So that's sort of principally what we're looking for public input on. And I'll sort of take the lead from city staff and work with city staff to kind of figure out how to best organize that meeting and kind of gather that information. And then from there, we would sort of, at a staff level, assemble that information, meet again with the consultants, bring that assembled information back to the Park and Rec Committee, probably back to council as well, and sort of, again, kind of reaffirm what we're thinking in terms of programming. And then we would move into just actually developing the design. So the landscape architects will sort of develop the drawings. Our engineers will put everything into CAD format. We'll make sure that it will work from a structural engineering perspective and get us to that 30% design. So the pages nine and 10 of the scope sort of outline what some of those major deliverables will be. And also sort of details the level of design in terms of percent. It essentially places, says everything will be developed to a 30% design. But I think that there is some nuance there, particularly when it comes to the boardwalk and trail alignment. We'll come out of this process, we'll have done a complete survey. We'll know pretty, with pretty high precision, the layout. We're proposing to use the district's sort of standard boardwalk design, so there won't be a lot of cost in kind of reimagining the boardwalk. And we'll be able to kind of plug those specs right into the design. So we'll be quite far on the actual sort of boardwalk design and layout, probably similarly with sort of the parking and those. The one that really will remain at a conceptual level are sort of the buildings and overlooked design. And that the... We imagine, in talking with staff, I think they confirm that the design for that ultimately will be budget-driven. We don't have a specific budget for the park yet. So as we then sort of move into the next phase of design and develop budgets and funding plans, that's when we can start to really focus on that building design. And then like I said before, there's also this sort of bucket of work that isn't accounted for in the engineering scope, and that's all the stuff that we'll be developing at the staff level, the funding plan, phasing plan, and then any sort of subsequent grants targeted and that kind of work. So as far as the cost for this design scope, we are still negotiating with the consultants, but we're estimating at this stage that it's consultants, but we're estimating at this stage that it'll be $140,000 design scope for this whole piece of work, and that'll be split between the city and the district. And when we bring this back for action, you'll be provided with a detailed budget breakdown, and hopefully we can even find some cost savings in there, and I can present you with a lower number. So again, with the, the split, that ends up being a city contribution at this point of about $70,000. And then, just to reiterate, the timeline, that is on page 11, but with approvals in, what do we have there? In November, we'd be looking to have this sort of full preliminary design by end of January, possibly into February, but not later. So I can answer any questions or take feedback at, at this point.
My, uh, my thoughts kind of, and I don't know if this is the right place to interject this or not, but as I, you know, I kind of look at the, the overall kind of plan for the park, it looks, it looks great. I mean, it looks like something that I think would get a lot of use. It would be very much enjoyed by the citizens of Victoria. And I'm not super familiar with that shore of the lake, I've only been on the lake one time, but my recollection is that that side of the lake is very shallow and very weedy. And so as I look at, you know, potential water edge, opportunity, fishing, kids' exploration, kayak access, I think those are all really good things, but I think people might imagine a sandy shore to do those things from. And so, similar to my question about dredging the pond, how do we turn, I mean, I, I don't think, knowing this is the most impaired body in Victoria, that many people would send their kids to explore that shore or get in the kayak. And so, you know, the timeline for, what is it more than a pretty thing to look at that you can actually interact with it? And where does our spending happen relative to that is kind of one of my areas of concern.
Sure. Yeah, so, well, let's say first, sort of as an aside, I don't know if these are the right program elements, and I don't know if it's the right number, I don't know if there are four different accesses, those are kind of the things that we iron out in the next phase. But as far as the broader restoration work, we are being recommended for funding through Lassard-Sams Upper Heritage Council for cart management, and that'll be, you know, a system-wide cart management program that will certainly target Wasserman as one of those areas with high cart movement. And the goals that we've set up are, we are tar, we are going to hopefully be bringing cart below that damage threshold within a sort of three-to-five-year window. So the, the grant runs 2018 to 2023, but we're trying to essentially condense 2018 to 2021, where we'll be doing a lot of removals. So that's kind of, you know, the first stage of the restoration work in Wasserman.
Luke, can I jump in on that for a second? So, you know, I'm thinking, carp kill them all, right? Get them out there. So, bring them below the damage threshold, I say, how long before the population rises back above the damage threshold?
Sure.
I mean, I think everybody here wants to make sure that we end up with something that's good, right, and usable, and not kind of a short-term fix. So how do we kill them all?
Yeah, so we, we have worked, you know, with the, with the U in a, a three-year cart study that ended last year to examine carp in the system, but also a big focus was to recommend best practices. And what they have found is that systems where they're overly focused on removal, you know, it's, it's virtually impossible to actually achieve a goal of zero carp in a system. So if you're focused on removal, you end up with some residual population, carp are extremely, they, they reproduce really rapidly, so they, you can have one reproduction event and all your work is eliminated. So the really sort of innovative approach that we're, that we are pursuing in the six-mile system is that we're also targeting the reproduction areas. So part of the, the study was to figure out all the areas in the system where carp are reproducing, and basically using aeration to manage those reproduction areas, to make sure that you are not having reproduction events. So our target is to get carp within the lakes below a certain threshold where you're damaging ecological conditions, but probably more importantly, you're looking to manage forever those, those reproduction areas. And then also just continue to monitor them, because if a reproduction event does happen, we build into our budget some ability to respond quickly to those events and contain the population and make sure they don't get out into the lakes.
Thank you.
I think Tom was right on about the shoreline topic, and it has a lot of direct relevancy to the programming. We had that discussion before, I believe, park recreation. And I'm hoping that with the onsite study work, that that's inclusive of that.
Sure.
And, you know, and it's looked at from an environmental perspective of maybe what can be or done or not done. And if there, environmentally, if there are many things that can't be done that really would make it viable for direct water engagement, if environmentally it's not going to be possible, then I think we, you know, if, if it's, if it's not going to work, it's not going to work. I think we have to be realistic about what's possible.
Agreed. And, I mean, if it's, you know, a million dollars to build a park or two million to make the lake usable, then, you know, those are the kinds of questions that we need to kind of have in our heads as we decide what's the right path forward. I mean, I think all those activities are, you know, that's Minnesota, right? I mean, that's, that's Victoria, that's what we want, but practically speaking, at what cost?
Is it possible for us to get, to inspect areas of the lake there, to walk in there and, and get close? A field trip? A little field trip to really understand how much work is in front of us here, because, you know, there's only so much we can do, and expectations don't want to be, we don't want to get expectations too high.
Sure.
If we can't really take this into a beautiful, usable park. And on the positive side, do you ever fish for carp? They're a lot of fun to kill.
Yeah, I caught one or two. Didn't eat them.
Yeah, and I'll, I'll say, I think with the site survey work, one of the primary goals is to really understand the shoreline. You know, we, we under, we know what's going on in the upland, we know what the space is like, we know that we can, you know, create something similar to what we have here, but I think where there really does need to be more examination is in that shoreline area. And if the access is more of a, you know, observation-type access rather than, you know, direct, you know, getting in the water or something, we'll certainly be realistic about that, and we'll try to come into that open house with, if we don't have the answers, at least have the questions framed up, so we can, you know, provide those realistic expectations upfront. I think that's, that's important and good insight.
And, you know, I, I kind of feel, I see your point there of having a usable beach and everything too, but I, I also feel that not every park we have has to be a full physical activity park. Some are just meant to be an observation point, if that's the case, and your point, the cost to it too. But what I really like to see too is full accessibility to these parks when we build them too. And that's kind of what everyone knows, me and the planning commission, that's one thing I push all the time. Full accessibility for all people, through any type of handicap, disability, whatever it is, it has to be accessible if we're going to build it as a community, because it includes everybody's use, and we need everyone's input on what that use should be too.
Agreed, yeah. And I, I'm not suggesting we make this an unnatural lake, right? But I don't know how much of what has ended up here is the result of, you know, the years of runoff that has created an unnatural situation.
Right.
There isn't, I don't believe, a single body of water in Victoria that's public that you can swim in.
There is.
Where?
The Auburn, West Auburn Lake, the campground in the park has a beautiful beach.
All right, thank you.
Open to the public.
That's awesome. That's great.
Been missing out on it all season.
Doesn't care if it has that potential.
Yeah, yeah. Well, Auburn is in the city.
Yes.
And it's, it's gorgeous.
And in the park reserve?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, and there's a campground right next to it too, so it's very usable. I don't think we push it enough, but it's part of the park reserve.
And I will say, as well, to what you were saying, Todd, the feedback that we've heard thus far mostly has been leaning towards a pretty passive park as far as, you know, the recreation. So that's sort of the assumption that we're moving into the public information gathering process, that what people are looking for, and maybe something that isn't as, that there's a lot of in Victoria right now, is just sort of that passive wooded, that sort of nat, nature, experience of nature in a park, and that, that's sort of where we're trending in this design, and we'll hear from it.
The reason I bring that up, and Tom knows this well too, is both my girls are off at college, and I've had silence for the first time in my life. And I enjoy it.
You, you brought up the question too about seasonal versus year-round, and I don't know what others here would say, I don't know what people would say in open house. I think it is a really good kind of thing throughout there. Personally, I'd say year-round, knowing, just knowing that's, that's kind of how we are year-round. But, but that's something that would be, that's just one person's reaction.
I mean, you know, you can imagine either groomed or un-groomed, cross-country ski, snowshoe trails, that would be something, I don't think exists anywhere in the city today. Probably going to get a GK.
Right. Well, then the follow-up questions are, then, is there a warming hut element, and then what's, what is the cost increment there, and then how does that form the decision? So will, that's all the kind of sorting out that we'll have to do in this, in this process.
I seen from the, from the sketches that the boardwalk and the trails are limited. Is, is that wetland impassable, or could, could the boardwalks and the trails be expanded?
Again, it, it will end up being a cost consideration. You know, the, the boardwalk could go anywhere, but boardwalk through wetlands is expensive, and, you know, we have to figure out what the footings look like and how much they are. So, you know, there's always an opportunity, again, to kind of phase it. So if we just develop sort of the basic access in the short-term, and then maybe you can add another loop in a couple of years as funding becomes available, and, you know, something like that might be available. But that's sort of, you know, often when you have a, a design like this where you're crossing a wetland, you kind of minimize that, that crossing point because of the cost.
Is the design, and again, this is, I understand this is very just vision kind of designed and actual, but is the, are the elements that are shown here laid out in such a way as to minimize tree removal and preserve the land in its more or less natural state that it, I think, is today?
Not yet. We haven't done a, a tree survey on-site yet, but that is one of the, the first steps, is to do a tree survey, and that would be when you would sort of read. I think that mostly, I mean, they're, to some extent, it's designed to avoid clearly wooded areas, but then they also did take at least a preliminary look at slope when they're considering trail locations and crossing points.
Good, thank you. I have a question. It's an easy one, it's related to the parking. This is early days, so talk about parking, it's kind of crazy, but we talked about handicap accessibility, and that parking lot is tiny, that you got in there 20 cars, and if this were to be a good park that's beautiful and work and attractive and desirable, there's going to, one be, there's going to be people coming there, and 20 cars, especially if you have a handicap accessibility, is nothing. So I'm a little bit kind of curious as to how the initial write-up would have such a small parking lot.
Yeah, sure. We, and that was one of my concerns when we, we started looking at the, the concept designs, and so what those 220 parking spaces would be, would be, you're more traditional, and then we'd be looking at expanded parking with, you know, you've got types of pavers, or, I'm trying to think what the names are, where they're grass, but they're hard, that you place within, that would offer additional parking spaces for that, you know, larger events or more traffic. So we have, we have certainly looked at, yeah, 20 spaces wasn't enough for me either, so.
Yeah, and that's one of those questions that we'll sort of have to defer to the city on. I'm, I'm certainly not a parking expert, so, but that, you know, tho, those are inputs that we'll want to get from you.
Yeah, I see, I see a sort of a, what looks like permanent kind of 20, and then that reinforced kind of.
Yeah, the reinforced grass.
That's 30. Did I hear you say 220 space?
No, the first, the 20 is more your traditional, and then, right, then the 30 is that.
But 50 is small, too.
So 50 is, you know, it's hard for me to, what is the, like, if you look at the, the non-wetland area, what's the acreage of the park that we're thinking of as a park here?
It's about eight and a half acres.
What is Lyons Park, just as a comparison?
That's about 27, 28 acres somewhere in there.
And that has that, that big parking lot in there, how many does that?
It depends on how people park. You know, I think when we were doing initial design, a redesign of making that a more permanent parking space, I'm trying to think how many we ended up in there. Maybe in the 80 to 100, I think, extra spaces.
That's, yeah.
So, and yeah, for the, the improvement, so, yeah.
Supposed to be just getting kind of a scope, users, population versus parking.
You know, and you're, I mean, it's going to be much like downtown, where you've got, you know, during certain events, you're going to have more people. You know, the same is true for the park system too, that, you know, Lyons Park on, you know, nights for ball and, and football, and it gets busy in tournaments and shelter rentals, you know, you end up with a lot more people, but you probably could go there, well, I know it's dark out now, but at, you know, 6 o'clock, you'd probably have 20 cars parked in there at that.
And you're right, it's a balance, right? You don't want to turn the whole thing into a parking lot, but you want to make sure people who want to use it can, can get there, that's it. So I like this concept of kind of the overflow, or it's the reinforced grass, so it doesn't just look like a parking lot, even if it's usable in that way.
And hopefully the casual users aren't taking advantage of our trail system, that's, you know, as opposed to the event users are probably going to drive there, but a lot of the casual users, I think, would be riding a bike there from the surrounding communities. That's the goal, anyway.
Anything else, thoughts? And certainly, if you, when you go home tonight and think deep thoughts about this, you can certainly email me or call me, and can certainly lay that information to Anna as well, so.
Is the public walkabout and general meeting on that, is that the same day? Is that the 25th? Is, did I misunderstand something here?
Um, we were looking at, what is it? The next park committee.
November 16th, 18th, somewhere in there, if my memory serves me right.
So we had, had originally talked about doing sort of a public open house into a park and rec committee. Maybe we'll revisit that schedule, because we are, we did hope to be a little bit further along, but tentatively, that, that's what we're targeting. And we'll nail that down.
So that's 20th, 20th, yeah. And we, we'll take a look at that and make sure we've got everything ready to go before we.
And it's not snowy.
Can't guarantee us that.
On the final agreement between the city and, you know, the Creek Watership District and the park being a part of it, to what extent is there, to what, to what financial commitment is the city making to the park? Because the park can be a half-million-dollar project, or it can be a $2-million-dollar project. Because the park can be a half million dollar project or it can be a $2 million project and to what, and I think there are probably people here that understand this very well to answer to that topic, but what, how, what's the city's commitment in the final agreement financially? What is it or isn't it?
So the district will implement the pond pieces and the wetland restoration elements and the city will implement all of the park improvements with the caveat that we'll be working together to identify and leverage grants for some of that, those upland pieces and also that we can sort of revisit that, that breakdown to sort of facilitate implementation. So the district could potentially take on some of the elements to kind of move things along. But that is like the, the base distribution that we've recorded in the cooperative agreement.
My, my recollection is we, other than the actual acquisition, we need make a specific dollar commitment or timeline commitment that we needed to get citizen input and budget input as to what we would put in and when and how that might be phased as, as an option if we wanted to pay as you go or, you know, just how that would all work out. I don't, I don't believe we have a timeline or dollar commitment beyond the actual land acquisition.
That's correct.
What was your anticipated closing date?
So originally we had said the end of this year, but since we're a little bit behind, well, we aim to close when we have agreed upon the preliminary park design, which would be end of January or sort of mid-February. But that just basically, it, that essentially starts that five-year payment period. So if you recall, and I don't exactly remember how we scheduled out the payments, but there's some immediate payment of some fraction of that.
I think it's 85,000 upfront, then 85,000 for the next four years and a balloon payment of two and change at the end.
Right.
Sounds about right.
Yeah, so it, it is structured out.
And then you referenced the sharing, a shared payment on the design process here.
Yeah, so that'll, that we intend to split.
Do we have that in our budget?
We will be looking at ways to determine funding source for that and we'll have that when we come back to council on that, options.
That's a 2018 expense or is that still this calendar?
I would think it'd be 2018 based on the timing right now.
We might incur some, I mean, we will incur some costs in 2017, we can discuss the, you know, how the reimbursement schedule or we'll, we'll bring all that back.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, thank you very much. Again, if anybody's got thoughts or questions, feel free to get ahold of me in the near future and there are sandwiches and chips in the, we'll come here, so feel free to help yourself to those and then we'll.
Like a workshop, highly informal and we'll continue, what's the end?
I'm hoping that we can be out of here by nine, but it kind of depends on how talkative everyone gets, so we'll see. We'll be focused, yes. So I'll sort it out, for those of you that don't know me, maybe you just heard my introduction for Ben Lane-Hozer, the Community Development Director. This planning effort and our comprehensive plan typically falls on my department, but it's one of the more highly collaborative planning processes that every city goes in, which is why we have all three groups assembled here tonight. As of here in a little bit, our consultant, Poisoned Cogler, has already been involved with us in starting that public engagement process. We're early on, so we've started identifying some concepts that we'll talk about later tonight. Having these three entities in the room, we're gonna try our best to keep you at a high level. So as we get into thinking about what kind of city Victoria is in 2040, we're looking for you to help inform some of the principles that we should be following as we get there. So a lot of the work and the handout that you have in front of you are slides that will be presented tonight that are rather text-heavy, so you don't have to squint at a screen necessarily, you can kind of follow along. But we will be looking for quite a bit of feedback from you all on some of the objectives that we believe are starting to come out through some of the concept work, but also just want to get a, a first blush as we move into refining what these concepts mean, get additional public input, to really put this plan together that represents how Victoria residents expect Victoria to be in 2040. So with that, just for the benefit of our consultants, maybe we start with introductions and I'll have them start. Britt, if you want to.
Britt Bomber, HKGI Planner here.
Brian Hardy, Poisoned Cogler Group, Landscape Architect.
Aaron Smith, Senior Planner, City of Victoria.
Ann Monke, Parks and Rec and Public Boards Director, City of Victoria.
Amber Hutner, Parks and Rec.
John Carlson, Conference Board.
Christian Pedersen, Park and Rec.
Judy Iverson, Park and Rec.
Jeanette June, Park and Rec.
John Wippen, Planning Commission.
Jeff Loshen, Planning Commission.
Kat Triller, Planning Commission.
Bob Wolf, Planning Commission.
Karik Agarwal, City Engineer.
Laurie Hoekman, City Manager.
Tom Strickland, City Council.
Tom Bolt, City Council.
Tom Gregory, City Council.
Off the tops.
Yeah.
Since we don't have a big audience, do you guys want to introduce yourself too?
Who do you go?
I'm Dave Geschack and I'm on the steering committee, have some properties south of Atlantic.
Scott Stenzel, I'm also on the steering committee for the 2040 plan, I'm down at March Lake Road kind of the south order of, of the door.
Thank you. Sue, can I review an introduction?
Sue Orson, the Victoria Design.
Thank you.
All right, thank you Ben. As I mentioned, we've done welcoming directions, we're gonna go through a quick project update and as Ben alluded to, we're gonna give you a summary of some of the community engagement we've heard to date and have a discussion about the vision and guiding principles and that includes some of the things that have happened since the last comprehensive plan and some things that inform the vision and guiding principles that, you know, serve as the basis for this comprehensive plan which goes through 2040. Then Brian's gonna go through and talk about the various future development and growth options, those are both for citywide as you see there, but also for two sub-areas which are the south area and the west area, we'll get into that a little bit later. And then towards the end, we'll discuss the upcoming schedule and where we go for here, go from here the next few months in the comprehensive plan process. So really tonight we're gonna gain issue input from the group regarding the options for the citywide and the growth areas, south and west. And again, as Ben mentioned, try to, try to stay fairly high level, the planning commission has already seen the plans in detail, or members from the planning commission who are on our steering committee have seen that the last few weeks. But we get your input from the broader group here, getting feedback on the vision statement and guiding principles and then give your general input considering the overall process as we go forward. So in terms of schedule, I won't get into the details here, but essentially we got through, back to basically April or May or March, April this year, we went through existing conditions, we analyzed all the base data here for Victoria, we studied where the community has gone the last 10 years, we've had some community input the last three, four months through various surveys and community engagement activities, events and so forth. And now we've really, the last few months have been developing various alternatives for things like parks and transportation and land use and other aspects of the comprehensive plan. And that's really kind of the key stage we've been at here for the last few months and upcoming, we'll be, we'll be getting input through the next month or so from a community meeting, we'll discuss towards the end of this meeting about the details on that and really arrive at a preferred direction for those aspects of the comprehensive plans we head towards November and then come back after the first of the year with more of a completed plan to really vet with council, other groups here. And then really, I mean, towards an ultimate goal of about March or April for a finished project, but then go to be, and be submitted to the Metropolitan Council for review and formal adoption and kind of sign, seal, deliver at that point. So we're about halfway through and a key, pretty key stage here tonight in getting your input. So community engagement, we've had a community survey that was online, we've had over 100 participants, we've had social pinpoint, which has been a function of having a map on the internet through the city's webpage where people can contribute thoughts about really various aspects of life in Victoria, transportation, parks, they can really make comments about various aspects and they can pinpoint it by location around town. So a lot of the input we got there is kind of very site-specific or neighborhood-specific, but there's some broad themes we'll go over here in a moment. And we've had some community-wide outreach at events, we had a booth of the classic car dive in June and there's been discussion about maybe some other events upcoming to get additional input more broadly from the community. So the input's been pretty broad, especially social pinpoint, over a thousand folks have been on there, a lot of useful information not only for the comprehensive plan, but just for the city staff and moving forward and improving the way the city operates and so forth. So from the survey, a lot of these inputs probably won't surprise a lot of folks in the room here, people want more retail shopping options, they definitely want more grocery stores and sit-down restaurants, they want more bike trails and splash pads, they acknowledge there's a lot of bike trails, they want more connectivity there, everybody, every town seems to want more splash pads and they want a wide variety of homes, they want more senior housing, they want mid-level housing, they want upscale homes as well, so these have been pretty consistent inputs from what the community's heard the last few years as well. Other input, we asked a question about kind of a balance of old versus new, which is always a key question in most comprehensive plans, what do you have area of new growth? There's definitely input that the city should balance the desire to grow and to serve new neighborhoods and new areas of growth, would maintain the strength of the existing neighborhoods and existing districts here in Victoria. So it's a pretty key message and it's something that a lot of suburban areas have to work to balance as they go forward. And of course, you know, since the city of lakes and parks, there's been a strong desire to preserve those open spaces in the sense of community that really derives from that here in Victoria. So everyone appreciates all that green on the map, they want to see it maintained and strengthened going forward. Social pinpoint, there's a little word cloud there, you know, some of the words there that kind of stand out, parks, downtown pedestrians, it's kind of a spit out from the input from social pinpoint, but some of the main inputs, kind of when you look through all the comments and we're gonna list every comment here of course, but for transportation, there's a desire for safer pedestrian crossings, there's a lot of comments about, well, this crossing needs to be improved here, over there, over there. So it's kind of more taken broadly, there's a lot of input, specifically in terms of improving the safety of those, there's concern about various dangerous intersections around town and there's other various locations, split comments and if, if anybody wants, we could provide you more of those detailed comments, locationally, you know, after the meeting or in the next, next little while. Retail commercial, again, it's a strong desire for a grocery store, those comments are all over the place, just, you know, more grocery, get a grocery store, pretty consistent, more restaurants and again, several comments about having more options, entertainment for young adults here in community, so that could mean movie theaters, places to hang out in general, so it's not an unusual comment to get as well. Parks and open space, there's a desire for more trails and paths connecting the various parts of town, so people realize there's, there's paths here and there, there's a lot of desire to connect trails that don't necessarily tie together from one neighborhood to another or from one part of town to another. There's definitely a key with that kind of balance of old versus new and desire to maintain the older parks. But overall, there were very pretty positive comments about parks and open space, a lot of, you know, sites were simply kind of kudos to various parks that have been down here the last few years, a lot of kudos about how some of the new grade schools like the Victoria Elementary tied with some of the parks there as well. So overall, pretty positive results on that. Now, vision and guiding principles, these are kind of the foundation for any comprehensive plan, we normally do this for most communities when they undertake an effort like this. A vision statement, you know, per the name, really describes, you know, it really kind of paints a picture of how the community will be in 20 years. So in 2040, what vision will we paint for Victoria at that point? It's, you know, typically very aspirational, dreamy, it's an ideal state, most communities don't necessarily hit all the aspects of that vision 20 years out, but it's good to set a goal that's lofty and really be aggressive and to really reach for an aspirational state in that way. It's goal-oriented and of course it's long-range, it's out through 2040. Now, guiding principles and the planning jargon and so forth, those really define the character values and priorities that help to guide how you get there. They really, kind of in terms of different topic areas, really identify the main thrust that you would use with the community to really achieve that broader vision. So it sometimes targets a few traditions like projects, programs, areas of focus, things like that. You know, in terms of foundations for the vision and guiding principles, Ben's gonna go into some aspects that we are gonna draw from from the 2030 plan, but as a broad foundation, we have the overall Victoria brand, our Victoria tomorrow 2040, it's actually the brand name, the tagline for this overall planning effort is, you know, our Victoria tomorrow 2040. And of course, the city's overall brand, the city of lakes and parks, you can see on the map, it's something that really provides underpinning for the land use and other aspects and alternatives that Brian's gonna get into in a few moments. So we really draw from the heritage of the community and the overall kind of tagline and vision for the community that we've had to this point. So Ben, we'd like to run through, well, first the draft vision statement, yes. So the draft vision statement, you should have that in your slides here, I'll just hit the highlights in terms of the bold, the bold text here. Again, Victoria wants to be a high-quality and full-looking community, wants to be multi-generational, wants to have a diverse range of educational, shopping, business, housing, park, trail and recreational opportunities. It really keys upon natural features and environmental qualities, it wants to grow in a high-quality manner, it wants to preserve the existing older parts of the community. So that's a, again, a key thing that we drew from the survey and so forth. And overall, the draft vision also calls for really strengthening and preserving the sense of community and the special places here in Victoria that we've all come to treasure. So, you know, a multi-prod vision statement here, as we get into the principles that informed the 2030 comprehensive plan, Ben's gonna have some of those ones.
All right, so what I thought would be important, since we're looking for you to give us some feedback on what principles should go into this 2030 plan, I thought would be helpful, instead of just saying, just start shaking them out, because I'm sure you've got them, came with them, prepared, just to go through how we got through the 2030 plan. So it's broken down by topic and I have the majority of them on the subsequent slides here, these are on that printout that you have in front of you, so if you don't want to squint at a screen, you can follow along there. So the first one, that topic of neighborhoods, our current 2030 plan said we want a Victoria that establishes and maintains innovative, high-quality subdivision design and housing types through the use of a plan unit development process and other similar techniques adopted by the city. Provide for a variety of housing types so that residents of a variety of ages and income have housing options with their housing, as their housing needs change. Create neighborhoods that provide pedestrian and bicycle connections to destinations and other neighborhoods in the community. Some things, since that was adopted in 2009, our PUD process, as Ben discussed, quite a bit between our planning commission and city council, has been refined some so that we're not only reliant on that PUD process anymore. One of the things that we found after implementing development through the PUD process over more than a decade was that we didn't have any other ability other than that PUD process to realize high-quality innovative design and to react to the market conditions as they come. So we have recently adopted a new framework of residential housing zoning ordinances and we're still going through a full update to some of the other ordinances that relate to those residential districts. Housing diversity has become a rather prominent focus of discussion, not only at the planning commission, city council level, our Victoria for a Lifetime Committee spent quite a bit of time on that as well. Some of the regular themes that you hear about is senior housing, that comes up quite a bit when we talk about what's missing from our community today, looking for additional housing that meets those seniors' needs where they are, people that have probably been in the community for quite some time. Also have quite a bit of discussion under the housing diversity topic about needs or options to retain current residents, we're looking for other lifestyle options that are currently finding them in some of our neighboring communities. So we're having quite a bit of dialogue about how do we keep people from just going to Chan or Chaska or Oconee or Eden Prairie when they could literally be here if we just provided an opportunity for them to stay. One of the other things that comes up fairly often is we have plenty of $500,000 homes, but we don't really have a lot of entry-level stuff or more affordable, more attainable things for the wider masses of people that aren't looking for a large-scale home. Some other things that have happened since the last comprehensive plan, we obviously went through the recession that I know you all are very familiar with, we're certainly now starting to show signs of coming out of it, we've had one of our more record permit years this year, issued more permits this year than we have at any point in time previously. And then for other contexts, we've added about 2,200 residents since the last comprehensive plan was done, so about a third of today, what is our community, has been added since the last plan was adopted. Switching topics, talking about parks, trails and open space, 2030 plan said continue to enhance the existing park, trails and open space system, create a system of parks, trails and open spaces that are safely and innovatively linked for shopping, work and play. Provide for a harmony of recreational opportunities and protected natural resources through park design and management. Provide access to green space to all residents either through neighborhood parks or access via trail, trails and greenways. So some things that have happened since the 2030 plan, we've added a number of parks, just to give you a couple of examples, Lake Bridge Park, Lakeside Estates Park, Madeline Park has been expanded, Bayfront Park has been added and then as of tonight, we're talking about additional parks that may be coming into that system in the very near future. We plan for additional community park spaces, the Lyons Park Shelter that's currently being undertaken by the Lyons Club is new, we've had quite a bit of dialogue even in the last year about what an aquatics or a pool element might be. We've had quite a bit of dialogue even in the last year about what an aquatics or a pool element might be for the community. That would be located at Detown Park. And I believe we've also added soccer fields to Detown Park since the last plan was implemented. City has acquired a significant amount of open space corridors through the development process. If you think about the north side of 43 near the Amber Gate or the Mattamy Homes development, we have all of the wetland corridors that go from 43 all the way up to Highway 5. Those have all been acquired and outlets and needed to the city. Then we've also, in the past year, updated the parkland dedication ordinance that is now consistent with the number of units that are coming in with each development instead of being some arbitrary percentage of total land that may or may not be usable or desirable. So really trying to make a unit-based approach to that ordinance system. The natural environment, so I know Britt talked a lot about kind of where these planning efforts currently have gone. There's a large emphasis on the natural environment in the last plan as well. So protect the natural environment, including lakes, wetlands, groundwater, air, woods, forests, prairies, and wildlife. Preserve and restore priority natural resource areas and habitat. Integrate preservation of the natural environment with park facilities and neighborhood design. So some specific noted change with just that corridor acquisition that we've done, not only from 43 to 5, but also kind of on the west side of the Laketown neighborhood. We acquired a large amount of wetlands and open space area that goes from those new homes all the way to Wasserman Lake. Downtown. Establish an urban downtown that is an economically sound, culturally vibrant, and visually attractive lowerland regional destination. Develop a central business district using land types that are multipurpose, mixed-use, and compatible with urban development. Create and advance a relationship and connectivity between the central business district, Carver Park Reserve, and the regional trail to take advantage of the geographic opportunity. Utilize and take advantage of Highway 5 visibility and access to create a strong street frontage. Develop attractive architectural design complemented by the use of quality building materials that are consistent with the adopted downtown design standards. Provide for on-street parking and parking lots that are landscaped and located in the rear of buildings and easily acceptable. Use extensive landscaping and site features to enhance the downtown environment. So some things that have been implemented since the 2030 plan. Our downtown core footprint has expanded north and east. If you think about the Charleston Tune Community Bantian, Bayfront Park, the Lakeside Building, City Hall, and Victoria Flats, all being examples of kind of this movement eastward. AGI Building has been repurposed, that's the new location where INTY is, and there's some other businesses that have moved into that building since. And then we've also seen some expansion of downtown heading west. So the new Alphabet Junction Building off County Road 11 behind the Dairy Queen is kind of the start. And then obviously, the city has been working to facilitate discussions for development of the 13 and a half acres that it owns. Next topic, business park, commercial nodes, and agribusiness. And so Brian will hit these when we get into some of those area plan works, because we're trying to further define what those look like in this comprehensive plan as they were more broadly just articulated as placeholders on the previous. So business park and commercial nodes, agribusiness. Establish a high-quality business park on the County Road 10 corridor with neighborhood commercial uses and multifamily residential housing. Provide opportunities to live, work, and enjoy recreational opportunities, all within proximity to one another. Strongly support investment of infrastructure needed for the business park, commercial nodes, and agribusiness, including improvements to County Roads 10, 11, and Highway 212 and mass transit such as bus and commuter rail. Create stronger commercial tax base and employment opportunities by providing additional commercial and light industrial land uses. Encourage quality design, building materials, landscaping, and infrastructure by adopting design standards for these areas. Encourage the establishment of neighborhood commercial developments that serve neighborhoods and encourage walking and biking. Encourage sustainable agribusiness such as small-scale farming, vineyards, and apple orchards. So some things that have happened since the 2030 plan was adopted. County Road 10 from 212 to Oconia has been rebuilt for additional capacity. Plans for interchange at 212 and County Road 44 are in the works. The City of Victoria provided a letter of support for that. City staff has initiated work to understand how principally utility infrastructure, principally sanitary and water, can be extended to the County Road 10 corridor in the south area that Brian will talk about here in a little bit. Council's engaged in dialogue with Southwest Transit about future services, including budgeting this coming fiscal year for the prime service. Final topic, I think, that I have for you, transportation. Promote functional, safety, and aesthetic improvements of major transportation routes. Work with MINDA and Carver County to improve arterial and collector roads, specifically upgrading Highway 5 to four lanes and extending County Road 18 to Highway 41. Reduce congestion, travel time, and pollution through transportation improvements and alternatives such as bicycle, bus, and rail. Encourage multimodal transportation, including transit and commuter rail to connect Victoria to the region. Encourage safe pedestrian and bicycle crossings for new and existing roadways. So some things that have been implemented. Highway 5 is seeing two significant improvement projects. The segment from Earl the Ankers Road to County Road 11 by Dairy Queen was updated, I believe, 2012. And then just this past couple of years, from County Road 11 out to Oconia also saw an update. City has undertaken updating of Smithtown Road 86th Street and 78th Street along with Cochia, all being upgraded to include trails. So as we start thinking about, those were examples, and hopefully, what we've accomplished since then gives you an idea of how these principles inform strategic efforts that are made or undertaken by the city as we move to implement the plan. So some big picture questions that are on those next couple of questions. I won't read through all of them, but as we think about neighborhoods, as we grow, continue to grow, we do have some requirements, given the classification of our community to average three units per acre. So the current 2030 plan, if we were just to look at all the colors on the map, Victoria, the city, got to decide where and how some of those different densities and land uses went so that we could show or demonstrate that we would average three units per acre. Some of those things may have changed since the 2030 plan. I think that's partly what we're going through this specific area plan work to try to recognize and figure out is, or some of our assumptions from the 2030 plan, do they still hold true in 2040? Are there some slight variations or changes that we'd like to see? What housing types are missing? Obviously, we've talked a lot about the senior housing, the starter homes, those types of things. Are we properly planning for what those are and where they are? And then what is most important about our neighborhoods? Is it our linkages in between them? Is it preserving open space and having just general space within some of those neighborhoods? Is it walkability, price range, any of those types of things? Parks, trails, and open space, so some things to consider, what kinds of parks we're looking for to meet all needs of every resident in the community? A lot of times, you get focused sometimes on ball fields or playgrounds, but not all of the population goes and plays baseball or kicks a soccer ball, gets on different types of playground equipment. So what kinds of things are we building into that system on a broad level to meet the needs of all of our residents? Our natural open space is part of our park system. If they are, how should we treat them so that it feels like they're integrated into that broader park system framework? What kinds of trails do we want? Sometimes we look a lot at what those side street trails look like, where you've got a road and then, you know, eight, 10 feet from the road is the trail right along the road. We also have a pretty good network of some greenbelt trail systems. Maybe one or more of them is important than the other. As we think about some of the more regional parks that aren't in our control, that are in our community or adjacent to our community, like Carver Park Reserve, the Arboretum, Lake Minnetoka Regional Park. They all have amenities that maybe we want to replicate just to have available for some of the Victoria residents, maybe we don't. And then just the broader question of, for the city of lakes and parks, how do lakes factor into the equation as we think about parks and open space? So downtown, how do we continue to leverage downtown as Victoria's community gathering center and destination? A lot of emphasis and discussion has been on continuing to make this kind of that community gathering spot. We have classic car nights, we have Folks Fest, a lot of other events year-round, that this is kind of the focus of the community in terms of coming together, not only for goods and services that are provided by the businesses down here, but also just to bring out that sense of community. What's important to distinguish downtown from other commercial areas that may emerge elsewhere in the future? So we'll hear or talk about some neighborhood commercial nodes that are being presented in some of the options. We'll also talk about another emphasis of employment or commercial tax base down around County Road 10. What's the right balance of not taking away from the downtown, we're still evolving and expanding, but also diversifying that tax base and providing additional goods and services the community is looking for? Would downtown change if Highway 5 was expanded to four lanes? That may be a good thing, that may be something that needs a little bit more focus or effort if that does end up happening. The business park and neighborhood commercial nodes, so what types of businesses are we trying to attract from those areas? Could be retail office, corporate office, industrial, manufacturing. Right now, our current 2030 plan had put kind of some placeholders along that County Road 10. Said business park, and the description of that business park was really market-driven. Well, do we, do we have a specific niche or a need that this community wants to realize as we think about additional employment base along that County Road 10 corridor? Where do we position additional commercial employment centers to keep downtown viable? So as you think about some of the neighborhood commercial centers that are being proposed in these areas, area plans, how much is too much? Where we still want to, again, keep that draw to downtown, but also provide those easy convenience uses right in the neighborhoods as we grow south and west? And then transportation. So what are our key transportation needs? We talked a lot about being very reliant on the highway system, the county road system, trail connections, transit. Think all those things are readily being talked about, we just don't want to miss the boat on how they get implemented or talked about in this planning effort. And then some things that do come up on a fairly regular basis, particularly as new development is being proposed, how do we deal with speed in neighborhoods? Obviously, everyone wants to feel like they're living in a, in a safe neighborhood, quiet road, but there are some roadways that have different purposes. And I think everyone, as much as they appreciate when they're home for it to be fairly quiet outside, they also appreciate being able to get to the grocery store, or get to work, or go out and recreate conveniently, not feeling like you're bogged down. So are there different things we should do through subdivision design as we think about our transportation network that can be calming to traffic, but also efficient in terms of getting people where they want to be? Britt?
Those are all really good questions to think about, to think about the next comprehensive plan and really perhaps finalizing our guiding principles and finalizing our strategies coming out of this comprehensive plan the next handful of months. This is a draft set of guiding principles that were established based upon input to date, and the steering committee has seen this here about three weeks ago. So let's read through these, it basically derived from everything that Ben just talked about, plus our analyses. So guiding principles, number one, coordinated and efficient growth management. Number two, a focus on quality design and preserving a sense of community, or a decent of community. Number three, balancing new growth with the preservation of the existing community and neighborhoods. Number four, efficient trails, parks, and recreational opportunities. And the final one's here, an efficient multimodal transportation system, economic and fiscal strength, as we're throwing. Quality of life in neighborhoods and districts, and finally, an accessible, connected community.
So now that we've gone through kind of that full breadth look at what different principles wanted in the 2030 plan, and as you start looking at some of those draft principles that Britt had on those two slides, what sticks out to you? I mean, are there things that we need to better articulate or put a broader emphasis on in this planning effort? I think all of you are regularly engaged in needs of the community, whether we're talking about park implementation, different subdivision proposals, other policy things that come before the council. What kinds of things are you hearing or seeing that need to be brought out in some of these guiding principles?
The one thing that pops to me is maybe, maybe not for high school. Has that been talked about at all?
Did meet with the school district as part of this process, and they acknowledge that when their school district boundaries are fully built out, sometime before then, obviously, they will need a third high school. They aren't exactly certain of where that might be, but based upon the majority of the expanded district area being in Carver and Victoria, they've said it stands to reason that that high school likely falls in one of those, one of the two communities there. The other thing to think about is with additional high schools comes a different, additional middle schools. And that's the one area that they haven't spent a ton of time evaluating. They have plenty of capacity now, but they don't know what that trigger or threshold point is of adding another middle school. And again, similar to the high school discussion, with most of the growth heading on the west side, it likely ends up in Victoria or Carver.
So kind of piggybacking on Paul's comment, unless I missed it, there's no real reference to the schools in this at all. I think whether it's high school, middle school, athletic facilities, whatever, there should be some reference.
And what do you see as being important about the schools?
I think schools in a lot of cases become kind of a core of the community. There's a lot of energy and a lot of, you know, support around the athletic teams and being in the community. I also think that, well, I personally was opposed to the, to the very eastern-centric investments that were made in this last round of ISD 112, the last referendum and where those investments were made, for exactly the reason that all the growth is coming this way. And so I look at that a lot, thinking about how we're a relatively young community. A lot of families, kids going to grow up through those schools, and the amount of activities and time that's spent there, to me, it's like an extra tax on everyone. In addition to paying for the schools, the amount of time driving back and forth. And so I think it's more than to just say, yeah, it makes sense to be here, but that we actively engage with the school district to ensure that the resources, the amenities, the facilities have a home that is convenient and consistent with building a core of our community.
And anecdotally, when you talk about towns our size or Third Ring out of Minneapolis, it could drive population out. We have new developments. There's a sense of community when you talk about towns our size, right? And that supports the things that we've talked about so far, right? Community, growth, neighborhoods, trails, meeting places. It seems to me to make sense to have that as part of the discussion going forward over the next 20 years.
I think, you know, maybe it's even worth saying, but you know, when the annexation plan is complete, which is 2030? The orderly annexation agreement ends at some point.
It's indefinite. So we set it up where we have a joint agreement with Oconia, Chaska, and Laketown Township that says what our ultimate boundary is.
Right.
How and when we get there is entirely up to us. The previous plan, we thought, with the way growth was trending in 2009, we thought we were going to get there faster than we probably are.
I thought there was actually a statutory end to it, but.
We had to, we had to identify how quickly and when we would build out to different areas.
What is the western boundary of the orderly annexation area?
It is on those maps to try to articulate, doesn't necessarily follow a roadway or a specific line, but it is that, that solid area of color, kind of the western boundary, just to the west of Lake Turbin. We go all the way up to Crown, portion of Crown College, about half a mile west of Pearson's Lake.
Because you had Laconia School District coming this way too.
Correct.
Well, the, the endpoint that I was leading to was that at the end of that, we are the largest city by geographic area in Carver County. Okay, whatever that means in terms of population density, I think that's a consideration that should be noted.
Should, should the school district somehow dovetail into this plan?
They'll end up reviewing it. So when we get to our preferred alignment as we continue to refine these plans, well, we're looking for them to give us some direction on where they think some of those schools may end up being located. And then we'll have that discussion about how do we jointly pursue some of those strategic locations if one ends up being in, in Victoria?
Because land is going to be the issue.
Ben, I took a stab at a guiding principle, if there's some energy around the Senate to just have a guiding principle to integrate school programming and facilities?
I think all the comments about schools are great, duly noted.
And I think the, the point, it's not just ISD 112 is relevant.
What else do we have here? We tackled schools.
How about some of our public works stuff too, expanding the costs, you know, and we're going to have to expand the public works, the fire department, our police presence with all this growth, future growth. I mean, that's, that's a lot of cost, obviously. But it's a service we have to provide and have to be aware that we're going to have to provide. Because growth just by itself with the housing, nothing without the infrastructure involved with it. I don't know how you would address that, maybe Ann can, I think it's something more creative than just my thought there, but, you know, how we're looking forward to, where we're going to locate that stuff. You know, what, what is our growth pattern for that, or, you know, looking forward on that?
At staff level, we've started, staff actually took a look at some of these area planning things, trying to think strategically about where are some of those potential opportunities to grow? If we're talking about facilities and those types of things, those are integrated into some of this area plan work as well. But I think certainly, not that we have to hash out work for, or tonight, but I think it's a good note to talk about some of those supportive things.
Because I, I think the location of the fire station, when it was rebuilt, was just put there because the other one was, but now it's not so centrally located and it's not very accessible, come Highway 5 at five o'clock, by 30. Maybe it's easier to have them out west and coming this way, or, you know, strategic planning of our services and where they're going to be needed, I think is huge.
There was just one, when you mentioned education, it made me think of, what are some of the things I'm looking for in a community? And education would be one, but the other thing I'm looking for in community is medical facilities. And then I didn't know if anything was, you know, I know maybe it falls under a subcategory of business, but as a resident, I'm looking for close medical facilities. And just looking at that to make sure we have some thought as to who we would want to encourage to come out and be in Victoria.
Can I jump on that right there? We had a, someone from the Ridgeview Foundation come on, Dr. The Lions, about raising some money for their new cancer wing, I believe it is. They're looking to spend $9 million to expand on that. And that was a question that was asked at the Lions meeting. Is there any plans in the near future to expand a clinic or any type of services to the city of Victoria? And basically, it's no. They feel they have it covered, Victoria covered by six miles, six miles, six miles, every direction. And at this time, no one had approached them either with an idea or a concept either of saying, hey, here's our growth pattern, here's the area we can provide and access for you too. So I think that's a good point too, especially if we're going to talk about senior housing. They kind of go hand in hand, the services you need to provide the senior housing, that's part of it. So I think that's a very important thing that we build into the light commercial end of our development is to have services available for the future and the seniors that we want to live here through our senior planning. But that was the information I had, was given that night, so.
Anything else?
Ben, I wonder if, as a city of lakes and parks, if something about our lakes doesn't belong in, in the sense of guided principles? Talked about preserving and protecting them, we're talking awful lot about developing around them. I know we've been talking about increasingly providing access to them. From a, if you preserve and protect them, then you should also be able to enjoy them. And so either parks adjacent to or integrated with, I think there's a whole lot around our community centered around the lakes.
How do other people feel about that?
I guess I'd agree with that. I think it's, I'm trying to think of the specific words, but just it, it is a factor that guides virtually everything we do when it comes to where things are and how we develop so absolutely.
What do we think about that, aspects of the relationship of parks and lakes? So we're undertaking that Wasserman West Park, that's kind of our first shot at having a city owned park on a lake. That's of reasonable significance, obviously we have a, a park area right next to Church Lake. That's not very large in size.
Well, if we can dream a little bit, I wish we had, could have equivalent of a, of a Lake Anne, which isn't, hasn't, if any of you are familiar with that, has tremendous asset. It's visionary, I guess, has no doubt challenges, maybe limited opportunities, depends on the right lake, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, property issues.
If you, if you look at the lakes that are in the city, many of the lakes are in the Carver County Park Reserve. So you, I mean, there's nothing you can do with those lakes, but enjoy them. Schutz Lake is completely surrounded by housing. You could just go right on down the line, the number of lakes that we can do anything have a major impact with, even though we have a lot of lakes, the number of lakes that we can have a major impact with are limited. So it, it's nice to say that we want to have a strategy for the lakes, but, you know, there's just a few that we can actually do something with.
And if that's the case, what's our, what's our opportunity look like?
I think you'd have to study it, it's probably limited.
So moving forward, looking towards Wasserman and Pearson's, that would be where we'd be looking, you know?
Pearson would be your next opportunity or something?
With our next authorization or the line for that, whatever it is, that, that would be, give us time and we would have some people, get some input from people on what they think we would need for a lakeside facility that the city would own.
I'm happy to be benevolent with other people's benevolence. But I know that Lake Anne was, you know, was actually a donation. And the founders, you know, the city leaders were, you know, it was early days and China wasn't really still a wild, wild west. I don't know what Victoria was back then. You can't necessarily count on those things to happen, however, but it did take some visionary thinking by city leaders years ahead to make something like that happen.
I was thinking a little less specific when I, when I brought it up, that I think one aspect of that approach is a, is an active facility on a lake, but if we're thinking more broadly about lakes, it's a, it's a little more diverse than that, it's, it's view corridors. It may be parks and active at waterfront, but it may be more passive and away from or adjacent to. Or, for example, earlier tonight was a strategy for a, a different type of park near a waterway that has both participatory aspects of it as well as natural aspects of it. There's been other developments in which we've seen that have provided trails and overbooks to, to lakes and engage them differently, you know? These are kind of interwoven into the fabric of our community. In many cases, many were developed, that might be even more reason to celebrate the opportunities that do exist and that may sort of come up interspersed within the continued development of the city. So it feels like it can be a much more broad aspirational view and what value the waterways have to our, to our city.
I do think that, you know, a lot of these sort of talk about a healthy, active lifestyle. And for me, that's a, almost a fading reality that I'd like to reverse, you know? Turn off the video games, turn off the screens, go out, do something, engage, you know, swim, swimming lessons and the like, whatever. You know, again, other than the, my, my new learning about. If you want to swim in a lake, you got to leave Victoria, or, or on a boat, I guess. And so some way of doing that, you know, to use those outdoor facilities in a more active way. I mean, yes, being able to have a nice view is great, but I think something that needs people, it keeps them active, you know, get on your bike ride down to the lake, go, you know, go to the beach, whatever. Those are the kinds of things that I did when I was a kid. I think we don't have any real opportunities or not much opportunity to do that here, so. I'm not sure how we capture that here, but I also, you know, think about some of the fights and things that have happened in neighboring communities over the years about these kinds of things. And I, I'm, I'm not at all a fan of things like eminent domain where we take somebody's private property rights and even if we declare it's in the, in the best community interest, I, I'm still opposed to that. So I don't know if that's something anybody thinks we should embody in this statement as well, but those are values of the community.
So looking at acquiring maybe the development process or some mutually acceptable.
I've seen many nodding heads here. I saw some.
There was a little shy, that's all right.
So it just comes to the residents, it looks a lot better if the city develops a partnership with the landlord and develops it through an agreement other than eminent domain. I mean, that's just the wrong approach overall.
I agree, you know what I'm saying, I'm just saying, we want to make that a, a guiding value here, as, as our cooperative.
I think, I think that's generally understood. I mean, what I've seen just from the council, the way they act and everyone else within the city, that's the way we do operate now, through collaborative effort and not a bully effort. So I think we got that going forward, you know? But yeah, definitely a strong point for our development in the future.
It's definitely something to look into, as we brought up with John, and we have to, certainly have to look into the future. Their last big opportunity to develop a very active park, you know, get in the water and play, is Pearson. And the northern edge of that is undeveloped. There's a couple of properties there that we have to start working with sooner versus later, we start forecasting, but there's a great opportunity there. But with that cost, cost and management, how are we going to pull it off?
Well, it starts with the vision, right? If that's where we want to go, then let's, or if we think we do, then let's figure out, you know, what steps we need to take to at least explore it.
I agree. What about downtown? What's left to accomplish downtown? And with that, the relationship of potentially other commercial areas in the community? Other than those, answer a different call for community. The aspects that people from the community were looking for about more grocery or more restaurants or more of those other features that were talked about?
Well, 13 acres. We should do something with it, integrate it with the rest of the downtown or get rid of it. And there's 13 and a half acres, plenty of room for a supermarket or a couple apartments, condos, senior citizen type things.
The question I have with the group is how do we preserve what we've all created here, which is amazing? When a lot of our economic growth on the commercial side tends to lean, lean more south, our southern borders with image corridors, how do we avoid dealing with some of the headaches Chaska may have endured the last few years, but a lot of that commerce went north? What do we do to tie those two pieces together and keep them both vibrant and exciting? And you've done a great job, look at Victoria, when I moved to Victoria 10 years ago, this is travel roads and lumberyard set right over there, it's a much different looking field today than it was 18 years ago.
I don't know if this is the right time to talk about it, but I was thinking about this forward looking community and what the discussion might be around renewables. We have a lot of land, we could put solar panels out there really, or we could look at any other number of ways to become a little bit more independent with, with what we're doing, drawing on regular power in this world. I don't know, it's just not an idea. I don't know what the city's planning is for even a person to have a solar panel to be able to, to work in that. But as far as forward thinking, we might want to consider, what do renewables look like in this city? What, what do we actually want to look like? And along with that, technology, what's our grid look like? I mean, I know we have what MediaCom and something else, but what's that infrastructure look like? And is there anything that we should be putting down to, to consider how we'd like to have our world look? Along those lines?
At the risk of saying, saying this in public, are, are we going to have MediaCom as our partner forever? Or are there other alternatives out there?
I hope there's other alternatives, I'm good on that one, yeah.
You want to talk about utilities, because the rest of our land, Excel territory, that's just sort of given?
Not always, not in all cases. There's still some Minnesota Valley, particularly as we grow south.
And I'm not sure what, when I ask that question, I'm not sure where I'm going with that. But, you know, I don't know if there's, if there's a value in wanting to manage that or if that's out of our hands regardless?
In terms of who the supplier is, it's a little out of our hands. Those boundaries are very difficult to exchange between the supplier, so you're kind of set with who you have.
Do some of the, again, kind of jumping on John's thought there, some of the aesthetic aspects of that, do we talk about utilities will all be undergrounded going forward in any developments? Is that already an element that we observe or is it something that is kind of up for grabs?
I would say that's been a more recent discussion, that isn't really memorialized anywhere in the 2030 plan, so it's not yet addressed.
Could be, I guess it's a question.
Could be. Probably not a guiding principle, but maybe something as we talk about expanding infrastructure or something, maybe gets incorporated into the plan itself.
It is covered by the code, but if you wanted to broaden that to something about, you know, we value the aesthetics and the viewship within the community, that maybe is more of a guiding principle?
I mean, it is complimentary to some of the other components that are in, that are the descriptions of Victoria for the future.
And I think my impression is that it's also efficient in terms of line maintenance and ongoing, you know?
Look at Puerto Rico with above ground wires. I think it's foolish to even think about having above, above ground wires and, and transformers and what? The more that can be varied, the better.
Well, along with that, with the infrastructure, you have to look at, as you're building with, with water and a lot of the things, we're, the, the weather we've had over the next 20 years is just going to get crazier. So we have to build with that and learn, look what happened to Duluth. So we have to build with that and learn, look what happened to Duluth in that flood and they have to redo all of their infrastructure to handle more stormwater drainage. So I think having a plan to say, we better look toward making things a little bit more fortified on the buildings, it's not a bad idea.
Infrastructure, the water. Are, are the wells, did we talk about any of this plan in terms of expansion of the water supply? And where the best places for the water supply to be are?
Yes, so everything that we identify as growing into, we also have to have a plan for how we serve those areas.
Before we move too far away from the question a moment ago about the value of downtown. We quickly went in towards the utility side, but you said something earlier tonight that I thought was really interesting in terms of what our downtown means for this community coming together. And I think about something as simple as classic gardening, which used to be over at the church parking lot and how that, at least in the times that I've been here, how that transforms the downtown. And that kind of resonated when you said that, is that what is it about the city or the, and there's probably a simple answer for that particular example, but as an example, are there others that as a city, if we're committed to valuing the downtown as a gathering place, that seems important enough to capture in some way. Either a commitment to that or the value that it has in our community. And it feels like when we're talking about the twenty forty plan, where there's going to be very specific and targeted and lots of energy given towards development of other commercial centers over time. If there's some level of commitment in terms of where's that place we call home, where's that place where as a community we come together? That, that could be a unique aspect of our community. Every city has their own unique place in which they gather. And if we're committed to a special place here, then could celebrate that.
You're getting head nods just for the record.
I heard, I heard crickets.
I've got, somebody I know who loves coming here to the car show, they're very involved in car shows. And they say it's, Victoria has a, it's unique, it's not a cookie cutter and it's pedestrian. And there are elements that as we want to grow the downtown, we want to keep it a very pedestrian friendly and keep it distinctive. And not another blank.
And I'll build on that, I've been here twenty-six years, so I've really seen a change and, but it really hasn't changed. It still has that feel when you're downtown, because you run into everybody, you run into all your neighbors, residents, because they can walk down here. They can get down here, this is where the action's at when stuff is going on. So as far as the small town feel goes, we still have it here for the most part, from my point of view after twenty-six years. Because people do come to the events that are held down here and you can tell it by classic gardening. And that, that started with ten cars, I remember or something the first time and nobody came. And then it just kept building and building and building and people get the idea. They want to go down there and see those people too and the cars and have a beer and relax. And we've provided amenities and I think the focus for any of our, you know, where do we want to move is one of the questions anymore, commercial type stuff. I think of it, it comes to a retail type deal or a sales type or a service thing, it should be within this downtown community area. Focusing to get this filled up with the thirteen acres, to get that all connected and just provide the services we need in this area. And the commercial stuff that can be outer is maybe the stuff that isn't needed on a daily basis or isn't an activity-based commercial property. Maybe it's a, just a store you go to once a month or maybe it's industrial, light industrial that can build some tax base, maybe hire fifteen people from town. Keep that on the outer edges of town, towards the traffic corridors, of course, because that's why they were built. Commerce corridors are there for a reason and that's where we want it. We don't want those semis coming downtown and making deliveries. You know, we don't want the smaller trucks, we want people to feel safe and comfortable and keep that other commercial maybe out of town. But focus on downtown and that thirteen acres and pushing that forward. Somehow someone's going to be attracted to that at some point, I would think, because everything else has been built up and changed around here like AGI. I mean, that's a great use for that building now, there's activity there. And that's, I think, the focus on downtown is to keep it for the residents, get the input from them and keep that, try to keep that thirteen acres in the plan for downtown development.
If I kind of boil it down, to me, it's work-life, right? Ten and eleven is more light office, light industrial, go to work. And at five, six o'clock, sidewalks roll off, then everybody comes down here to play, right? And restaurants, socializing, you know, that kind of a thing. Maybe it's not quite that simple, but that's sort of how I would kind of bucket it if I was to.
I think that's a fantastic theory, but what do we do when a big box comes to town? And they want to put a big box retail outlet of some variety in that southern quarter. And they develop, so you start with a big box and that brings all the smaller boxes and strip malls and that sort of service from within, do we restrict that? Do we take that off the plan?
I think at some point, that's a decision we'll have to make, obviously, but I, I mean, personally, my feelings are different on that, because I'd say absolutely restrict it. We have it six miles away in every direction. We've got three towns that are malls now all around us. We don't have to be like those towns, we don't have to have those services when they're so relatively close. There's, there's ways to get to those places that you only need once a month or twice a month. It's the small services and stuff like that that are personal that I think we concentrate on in Victoria, because we're not going to be at Chanhas in Arcoña. I mean, they have every retail, every fast food, have you seen that strip on Highway Five west of the car dealership? They got seven more stores going in there that are Chick-fil-A and, I mean, they're going to be the same thing as Chanhas and now you'll drive through and it's one long mall. You come through Victoria and people look, that's what my friends still comment to me about, they said, we like Victoria, it's not one long mall, we love going out there and being able to see the lake, have a hamburger and a beer and walk around downtown. And they've been saying that for twenty-five years and that, that part hasn't changed. So I think holding on to that character, John, is very, very important for this town.
I completely agree and wonder how do we do that as the vibrant city and county at some point, as the biomass drives us? How do we, and then this is, I'm asking because I don't know.
This is a hard question, I think.
How do we keep the vibrant community that we've grown and developed downtown, but still allow the commercial aspect to come to town? Because we need that commercial tax base to feed our neighborhood base. I just don't know what the answer is.
Well, part of it's economics, uh, even if you talk about some grandiose plan for down at County Road eleven and ten, that's a, a minimum five million dollars just to get our utilities down. And so, you know, economically, it's not going to happen overnight anyway. So what are we going to do in the next interim years? It's, you know, it's, it's nice to talk about that area, but very expensive to get the rest of the city down there. I mean, we can't paratroop in there and then start building. You know.
Well, I think at some point, to your point, is that has to be part of our plan.
Right, well.
I mean, integrating that into our
There'll have to be an investment.
Stations of services.
That says, we can't wait, I mean, we can't wait forever to start developing, look at all the stuff that's happening on the Chaska side. I mean, those are nice, you know, data, can't we get a data center, you know, that kind of thing? But there'll have to be an investment, a big one, to get it started.
Yeah, let's move on. Let's go to the next set of slides here. Yeah, let me just frame it up for us, Brett.
Okay, as we started this overall process, before we got into talking about specific land uses, citywide and also in these two areas, which is the south area and the west area, we kind of running from all of our kind of physical analysis and factors of the land and so forth, we actually analyzed what was developable, which is a total acreage. The areas in red are actually not developable, so most of the existing city are victorious colored red, because we're not going to, that's not counted in the numbers in terms of what can be projected off the future growth. The areas that are green are actually, you know, okay for development going forward. So within the city limits right now, there's about four hundred forty-four acres that have still technically remained for development. Now, some of those acres then are actually accounted for and some flats have been coming through the last six months or a year.
Right.
Right, so it's already spoken for. In the south, it's about eleven hundred twenty-one and the west, nine hundred and five. So that total between the current city limits and that west area and south area is about twenty-four hundred seventy acres. Typically tech onto that about twenty-six hundred acres for the area to the south and west of their, their major, the ultimate boundary, pretty major of the colored area that I have, you see, for citywide. And we actually did some projections based upon mainly population projections from the city. You know, Met Council has their own projections, but the city has, theirs are actually more aggressive than the Met Council's projections for population based upon what we've seen from permits and activity the last few years. So in terms of just projecting out through twenty forty, we looked at demand for different types of uses here, office, industrial, retail, different kinds of residential. We added some overage to these numbers. So overage is basically accounting for, you need to account for right-of-way, kind of the configurations of lands, extra space you need for just kind of this, that and the other. And since that number is seventeen hundred fifty-five acres, so we see that here, we have basically twenty-five hundred acres available for development in the western, south areas, Amazon the current city limits, we only need about seventeen hundred fifty-five. So we're fine in terms of having enough land to plan for the growth that we are expecting through twenty forty in these two areas and the current city limits. That's the good news there. Now, Brian's going to go through some of the different kinds of land use typologies. We have different colors here in these maps that correspond to some of these descriptions, then he's going to dive into some more specifics on the plans.
We'll start at a high level, look at the sort of community-wide plan and ask some questions. I think we started to have conversations about here, about the relationship of downtown to some commercial or job-based growth. Where residential fits in and then the broader open space network that we're evolved with this as well. But to set the table for that, as we think about the type of development that could occur, we sort of organize, you can see it outlined here on the typology board. We've got a category that's basically all residential uses, uh, starting at that residential conservation use that you can see here on the screen, that has everything from larger lot, which was talked about here, uh, one unit for every three acres, all the way up to about a traditional density of two point two five for a single-family acreage. And we looked at this particularly in the growth areas at two locations where we may want to protect and preserve more of the natural resource areas there that are part of the developable land, and I'll talk more about that when we get in there. But we thought this was an opportunity to provide a unique housing option here in the community. We need to maintain an option for larger lot size where applicable. With that, then we increase our density as we go. So we talk about residential density, low-density residential from one point five to six units per acre, typically single-family detached or twin homes. Increase that up to median density, which has a range of six to twelve units per acre, single-family attached for the most part, likely townhomes. Uh, it's even on the lower end of that, probably in the six to eight range typically you'll see that. It may get closer to that with some sort of back-to-back townhome products that get a little bit more intense. Higher density areas that you see like in the areas of downtown or some other locations where we have stacked residential, where it's more like an apartment building, that's three to four stories in height. It's typically apartment condominium, likely senior housing fits that mold, so we'll look at those in different areas. Those are our categories of residential. Then we looked at a couple of different categories that were non-residential, basically a neighborhood commercial use that is really in the square foot range of, you know, twenty to a hundred thousand square feet. And that might be a small shopping center, primarily service for that surrounding neighborhood component. Community commercial, which is the opportunity for some larger scale retail to potentially take place in the, the locations we have identified are, we'll talk about in here in the community, around the broader plans, one off of Highway Five and again that node down at ten and County Road eleven. This is where you'll typically see larger retail goods and services, typically more franchise-based retail for the most part, maybe some entertainment in the mix, but I think that's a good conversation as it relates to downtown. Obviously, the downtown mixed-use category, which is inclusive of that thirteen acres to the west and how that grows and evolves, and between the two concepts, we look at somewhat of an expansion of that and that may relate to the change over time with the Highway Five corridor, that we're going to expand from two lanes to five lanes. Obviously, a mix of uses, this is the place in town and we want to highlight that. The civic anchor, obviously, retail, service, office, residential, really the sort of melting pot of all the uses that are a part of the community. Public institutional, we've identified those, those are typically the school components, public utilities, government services, infrastructure components, those are identified. And then sort of a flex employment district. Our description of this is still pretty broad and maybe you can all help us hone in on that a little bit yet tonight. And this is primarily identified in portions of the southern growth area and then also south of, of Highway Ten as we look at the overall plan. But this could run the gamut of a variety of different office, manufacturing, tech, different uses that could all be a part of that piece, so I wanted to cover those as well. So as we look at two options for the community, I think we started to touch on this in the dialogue that we had here tonight. So some of the key questions we had were, so what are, what are the balance of the commercial growth, the downtown versus other nodes in the communities? How and where do those occur? What are the appropriate areas for housing of different densities throughout the community? Strategies for areas along and south of County Road Ten, down in that corridor where the rail line kind of creates that triangle base between ten and eleven there. Areas near the Arboretum, Highway Five in particular, both north and kind of south sides of that are owned by the Arboretum. How do we think about that area moving forward? And broader, just thinking about the allocation of parks, connectivity was talked about a lot from the community component, how has that played into it? So as we looked at our concepts, and this is really the case for the citywide components, the, the relationship between these different uses as well as the growth areas, we'll talk about those after we talk about the broader community. But as Brett mentioned, we looked at the projections of, of household growth. We looked at the analysis of the natural system, the overlay of the weapons, the drainage provides, all those elements help play into how we think about a growth in the community, the existing park and open space frameworks, how do we connect and interconnect those and grow them? Uh, the transportation framework, a lot of the roadway networks here are sort of county jurisdiction and understanding that roadway pattern as we move through it. How does that play in and feed thoughts on growth and development as well as these strategies, we'll call them different nodes of, of, of growth for a commercial development in, in the community and that inner relationship between downtown and the like. So to look at these, I think maybe what I'll do is sort of talk to the two, if you don't want to pass them. And Brett, maybe you can toggle from these sources.
Yeah.
Where the slide is. Turn off the more, you move these for the camera. Well, there's two concepts that we identified and the first one really, want to bring that up, yeah. Downtown really remains in its, in its existing footprint, which is basically to the north side of, of Highway Five for the most part. Some areas on the west side, south of Highway Five, still fall underneath that category of the downtown piece. We would retain the existing guidance for more of the agricultural components around the Highway Five area at the Arboretum. And then we look at a component near Highway Ten and County Road Eleven that does have a slightly larger scale community retail component, and I think this is about in that eighty to one hundred acre category. But predominantly have supporting flex employment areas, both to the south and growing quite steadily towards the west, south of ten. But also even to the north of that commercial district there, south of the rail line. That seems to be a pretty significant divide there. Other areas in those nodes that we talked about, the County Road forty-three, and this is sort of a carryover from the, the last planning effort, looking at possibility for commercial development at that node between ten and forty-three. And then we looked at another one here on the north side off of Highway Five, where we are anticipating another second or another full access between the existing one at Lake Town Road. And then we looked at another one here on the north side off of Highway five, where we are anticipating another second, or another full access between the existing one at Lake Town Road. And then the access that feeds into the residential development there. So one opportunity on five. Mostly, we've allocated those bigger locations of potentially community commercial on the bigger roadway corridors in town. We have more traffic, more trips, more visibility on those stretches. So thinking about allocating some broader commercial areas there. But not to be outdone, we've also looked at some smaller nodes that are more in that neighborhood commercial service component off of Marsh Lake Road. And what would be ultimately the extension of Marsh Lake Road to the west as it continues. Predominantly throughout the rest of the community that you'd see in the growth area on the west side and on the south side. And we'll talk about those in more detail. It's predominantly single-family residential for the most part. There are opportunities for some additional supporting density as we surround some of the commercial nodes with either higher-density housing or some of that medium-density residential product. And you can also see that as an idea along the south side of County Road 11. That's concept one on a broader scale. Concept two, to look at that a little differently, we think about in terms of expansion of the County Road, or State Highway five. Does the designation for downtown sort of jump the Highway five corridor to the south and include other properties that would be a part of that area for the downtown? So is effectively on both sides of that roadway corridor, something to consider there. The big difference, I think, with the County Road 10 note is that we take most of the jobs base and keep it south of Highway 10. We look at an area that has more of a housing component adjacent to some of that retail use that would be along County Road 10. We did keep this in play, again, the same, but I think with this concept, we had heard from the property owner meeting that maybe there, and we talked about this earlier, about that idea of the broader park space. That one option may look at changing a broader, maybe recreational, community park area that may fit with an area on Pearson's Lake in the future. And it may be identified there as we go forward with that. And then obviously, again, keeping some consistency with those nodes of greater intensity, commercial development, residential development near Highway five, and again along County Road 11. But predominantly, a single-family housing throughout. One of the differences here in concept two is an idea, and we'll talk about this as we get into the details of the south growth area of that conservation development. Where we're really trying to protect a lot of the natural resources that are sort of in the center of that growth area site around the town club area in there. So we can talk more about that. What else do we have on here?
Also, there's a note around the Arboretum at 13, County Road 13 and five, this is the suggestion or a gesture toward perhaps some more commercial development in those corner there. That could be somewhat of a smaller node there around the Arboretum. That's one difference for option two.
So that's sort of a global scale of the two options. And then just for sort of diagram purposes, just to better understand the parks and open space network, I don't have the overlays for, but on the screen, you can sort of see, this will definitely show up more in the other growth areas. We looked at the drainage ways and where we have sort of the wetland pattern and how water would move through these growth areas. We really worked hard to try to protect those areas and interconnect them with trails and stormwater treatment opportunities throughout. So you see some broad interconnectivity on the north side, as well as on the south growth area, really through the center of the site. There's a pretty large system of wetlands, broad woodlands in that area. And then creating that as a natural resource amenity and sort of park and open space trail amenity at the same time. Obviously, there's some neighborhood parks that are intermixed with, within those southern growth area ideas. And then I think that broader idea about the neighborhood complex or the broader complex then.
I just wanted to point out that you do all have pronounced in that packet of slides of the open space framework. Just do you wanna get a closer look at that?
And so we worked at a couple of different scales. There is that star on the map that could indicate maybe a different play for that broader combination of the waterfront park. That's a community-scale park, maybe has a combination of athletic components with it as well. Something that I think we could consider as we move forward, I think program of that to be determined, obviously size and scale of that to be determined too, as a potential waterfront park. But that was discussed at Pearson's, not only on the north side, potentially a couple of options there, but definitely the two properties on the west side that are vacant today. So we looked at those. Should I keep going, I think, or is there any questions broadly on the global scale here? Maybe the south and the west growth areas can give you a little bit more detail.
Any questions or comments on those big themes? Downtown going south of five, now that you've started to see kind of where some of those additional commercial locations might end up? Do you, anything new jumping out at anyone?
Can I share a thought?
Absolutely.
I know we talked a lot about these options at the steering committee meeting, but one of the things I don't remember us talking a lot about is the five, widening of five and the CBD extending to the south. My first reaction to that is, it seems like the widening of five actually creates a harder line than even exists today. And to suggest that the CBD tried to extend south of that in the bracket.
Yep.
Seems to sort of erode some of what makes the CBD as successful as it is today. I understand the temptation to align some commercial development along that roadway, but it feels like energy placed there as opposed to like thing the CBD, you know, with the...
Keeping it all north and stretching it.
Yeah, it just feels like you, you take accessible and walkable downtown and you, it slowly starts converting it to a more traditional suburban neighborhood. Where you gotta get in your car and hop to your four or five different destinations before you go home. And it'll be slow, but almost surely to happen over time if you sort of commit to that development on the south.
Let me ask you that a different way. Maybe not in the commercial vein, but what if that were more intense development of a residential nature on the south side of that road? If that came with it?
That feels like it could be pretty successful. But I think pulling the commercial across a four or five lane highway.
Yeah, I'm trying to envision people walking that stretch on a four-lane highway there. I don't see them doing it really that often in Chanhassen today, across five and four lanes, so.
I mean, proximity may come for something.
Right.
But still that accessibility, that's a pretty significant.
Yeah. Has something changed with Mindai? Because in the next 20 years, the probability of widening Highway five is still pretty low, isn't it?
Not with the advent of the current community transportation tax.
Ah.
That's a big change in the prospects for seeing that road.
Right, but also to get the road widened at downtown, you'd have to widen it all the way back upstream. So that's, that's...
All the way up to 41.
That's why I think timeframe is certainly unknown still at this point. Are we talking 10 years, 15, 20 plus? But I think we certainly wanted at least put an option out there that says, you know, if it does happen, do we think differently about that five corridor? And I think this is the type of dialogue we were hoping it would bring about.
The two, I think, extremes would be a big bypass that abandons downtown and it becomes unused. Or a big swath out of the middle of it that makes it hard to access, right? And those are kind of the two poles, we want to avoid either, either one of those, I think.
That's what happened to Laconia, right? They added downtown next to the lake and then five went south and pulled everything away. I guess isn't there a certain charm to downtown Laconia being right on the lake too?
I think so. So Tom, I agree with you that those are the two extremes. But it feels like a strategic commitment to keeping it on one edge is actually a strategy that overcomes the two extremes. Right, if you, if you put on a strategy where you let it be like any other small town with a major highway cutting through it. And once you get to that point, the city doesn't like it, the state doesn't like it, nobody likes it, now you wanna bypass the problem? As opposed to planning ahead as a city and saying, well, let's avoid that from being a problem by fully committing to what is successful today and keeping it north of that hard edge. That might actually be a sustainable strategy if you stay committed to it long term.
I like it, yeah.
So, I mean, with that thought, we already have central business district on the south side. The cigar shop, the gas station, that's all in that zone already. So west of eleven, possibly, yeah.
And I realize this is really small scale, but what the option is representing is taking it basically on the other side of eleven from the cigar shop also. And taking that basically full block length all the way across, which really would beat everything up to the fire station.
Yeah.
Right.
Right.
Yes.
Give me 10 years and there's a lot of here then. I live right there.
It's still, but it was estimated seven or eight years ago that to make the corridor from 41 to the end of Victoria, to the west side of Victoria, four lanes was like 55 million, 60 million. And that was estimated eight years ago. So the real cost of doing something like that, probably 100 million. I, I don't know, but it's astronomical. So it's gotta be, I still say the odds are it's not gonna happen in 20 years.
Well, and that's for what, length of four miles, is that what you said?
Well, I...
Roughly?
Five, it's probably five or six miles, people from 41 to the west side of Victoria. I'd say it's probably six.
And yeah, that's a huge number, but you know, depending on what the state's sentiments are, light rail is $100 billion a mile, per mile, right? Well, they're talking about 100, 1 and 1/2 billion dollars to bring light rail to Eden Prairie. If somebody's committed to it, there's...
It can happen.
But I, but so to Jeff's point, I think, sorry, Tom, but to Jeff's point, I think making a strategic commitment to what we are and what we want to be is the right way to get... I mean, I don't really personally have a problem with staying two lanes as long as there's a way to officially move people in and out of their houses so it doesn't just become a grind every day.
Slightly mutually.
Exclusive? Well, you know, I get...
Start working against you. Unless their car's flying.
I think that's a good comment. I think it's, it's well-taken and I think sort of the detail of that is, how big does that corridor get in the future? And what's sort of left over? What do you do with that space? Is that a transition zone that is guided maybe for slightly higher industrial that really helps protect the integrity of the surrounding neighborhood to the south behind that? Sort of act as a quasi buffer to that without inviting commercial to that other side of the street? Maybe that's a strategy to help with that too, so.
And does extending County Road 18 make it any less pressured? You know, if that was to extend all the way into Victoria, that's another escape route.
Yeah, I mean, I think of...
Peter's second street.
I mean, I think of, yeah, 18 and Marsh Lake and 10 and seven and five, sharing it with good north-south connectors is a way to disperse it. Now, I don't know if that's enough.
Anything else community-wide relationship? Because we, you know, a lot of the detail is in those growth areas. We can jump to those and talk more about those. We have even alternatives within those that we can discuss. Is that all right? So what we, I'll just talk to the screen here first and put this up. But when we looked at these areas, we did a lot of analysis upfront really on what, what is the land telling us out there? What does it look like on the ground today? So everything from the wetlands, where we had canopy cover for the woodlands. Obviously, the county road network here in the south growth area is a big impact on the edges because it really dictates access. There's access spacing standards that come with county jurisdictions on those roads. So where can we get full access in? Where do we get right-in, right-out access? So even that tends to dictate land use and where that can go. Even existing utilities, you can sort of see them on the north end, coming from the Lennar development, how do they get here? And then working with Karen and Ben on sort of planning for the expansion of utilities into this zone. Obviously, we know we'll need a lift station down here. We'll need the well components, water treatment components at the same time. And we'll talk about that as we get into it. But from the ground standpoint, really, you've got two areas here in the center of the site that, obviously Marsh Lake on the north, it's kind of its own component. But across the middle of that site, it's sort of this interconnected wetlands, a sort of rolling topography with some upland woodlands. That's a pretty great natural resource, connected natural resource through that whole piece. How can we work to preserve some of those great elements that really are an aspect of this community and what it wants to be? So as we look through the planning process, some of those things with land use that we wanted to achieve here, we're looking for more of those commercial uses along, you know, larger franchise uses down at the corner of 10 and 11. Thinking about that neighborhood node at the corner of County Road 11, maybe some business park uses along 10. High, medium-density residential along that eastern edge, along County Road 11. Thinking about some medium-density residential at some other nodes, particularly County Road 10 and County Road 43. Predominantly low-density residential throughout, but responding to the pattern that we have set from the landscape out there. And then really a broad interconnected open space network throughout. We think that's critically important. So when we look at the south growth area, option one here, one of the big components to this is obviously, let me move over here so it'll be a little bit better. Obviously, the county road system with 43, 10, 11, and Marsh Lake Road. What are identified on here right now are really the access points where we can get in. And then thinking about interconnectivity between development patterns that are there today. So the light green that you see here really is preservation area, which is a combination of wetlands, obviously Marsh Lake, some wetlands that are within the site itself. The drainage divides, obviously there's some draws that work their way through the site, trying to preserve those to the extent that we can. And then building off of that natural resource and the amenity for transportation and circulation throughout. So there's a few things here with that. Obviously, you can see predominantly the single-family residential throughout, but there's also edges that we looked at, more increased density. And that's where we have more of the trips, more of the transportation, more of the access and circulation for folks. So this node at Marsh Lake Road, some higher-density housing, maybe some commercial use at the corner, supported by more medium-density residential uses against that edge. The area in blue here, that's that civic institutional, or civic use that is really the lift station, water treatment components. And then we also have some well facilities that probably would intermix in some of the open space areas that we have for this. So that planning is integrated into the spot. This is really one of the lower areas in all of this growth area topographically. So there'd be gravity-fed for all of this to that location and pump back up to the main gravity sewer as a part of that piece. The big difference here again between one and two, we looked at this concept alternative that's got predominantly retail use on the north side of Highway 10 here. This has got that visibility, as you look up the hill, you can still see the commercial. When you kind of get over the top of the hill and the crest of that, we move back towards a more of a jobs focus there. So that flex employment base, and then we continue that to the south here as well. The gray line that you see running across here, that's a high-tension power line, the transmission line that comes across through there. That sort of sets an edge, and we'll talk about that in the second concept as well. Roadway patterning and circulation, one of the comments that we had from the, two sort of comments really on this. The idea of an east-west component, maybe that's split and circulates around. But even from the last comprehensive plan, that we have another collector roadway network that offers another route north to south for folks to circulate through the development. One thought from the perspective of the fire chief was to look at more of a direct east-west. But when we really look at the landscape out here, there's a lot of topography in that area, making that roadway connection through there could be challenging. So that's something we'll have to look at as we go forward. So concept one here, predominantly single-family residential. The second concept has some similarities.
Brian, can you leave it on the other side?
Should I rotate or are you going on both here?
I just think it's easier for these folks to see.
You can pick it from that other one. Sorry, guys. Some of the ideas here are very similar. We've got a lot of the transportation and trips are out on the county roads. It lends itself to have, support some of the higher-intensity uses near those edges. In this concept, we looked at an idea of that conservation residential in the center of that site, which may afford some larger lot opportunities for the community in there. Those could be coupled with private conservation easements to preserve more land, or they could be integrated within the open space network depending upon how they're allocated. But we thought that was an option to provide some flexibility for the type of lots that could occur in that area and preserving quite a bit of open space as a part of them. With that then, the sort of extracting some of the density that was shown here before with single-family lotting and bringing that more to the edge. So you see an area here that's, although it's narrow in depth, it has enough there... and bringing that more to the edge. So you see an area here that's, although it's narrow in depth, it has enough there where you could develop more of a medium-density housing product between county road ten and sort of the ridge line where that high-tension power line isn't allowed that to sort of be the divide between development there. Again, I think the big change here between the concepts is looking at that area behind the commercial use that's oriented more to county road ten, is being, become more of a mixed housing village that might support that's commercial use here. So there may be higher-density housing, there may be a small park and some townhome uses as a part of that. And really one of the big issues here is the rail line. There's really no cross-connectivity with that opportunity. We gotta get back out to the county roads and then come back in to that stretch. So we're trying to think about how to make those connections work. So they're gonna have to all really kind of circulate back out and likely won't get any additional roadway crossings for that piece. So that, think about that as it helps you understand your uses in that quadrant. Other elements to this are the park allocation. You can see here, we sort of distributed more neighborhood park bases that are closer to the collector roadways. So as the collector roadways carry off-street trail components, they could also be interconnected where possible with some of that broader open space. So you can have a combination of trail network that runs along the corridor. We have some of those open space diagrams in the slideshow, you may not- Kind of just jumping around here, but. Loading. Wheel spin. We'll keep talking to these. If that picks up, let me know. But, so the big difference would be that, you know, we're trying to interconnect some of the park components near that open space move. Here, we're bringing the parks maybe more inboard to the development and are more adjacent, centralized to those locations. Here's that difference in that sort of east-west transportation piece. It could be pretty challenging in an area like that. One option maybe is to interconnect these, but also that distribution could work. I think from the fire standpoint, it was, how do we get, you know, if there's a train, how do we get across that stretch? We wanna be able to have enough access. If there's other facilities east or west in there, that was one of the points.
Really, right?
Yeah.
We talked about this barrier, this invisible, this wall with the rail, rail bed there. Probably dumb question, but if they ever had additional passage, underpass, overpass, crossing, to help us bring more connectivity?
Historically, they did, actually. We saw the photos from, was it the Schmeigs that brought those?
Yeah.
But I, they had leveled it to an all-grade crossing, what, fifteen years ago, twenty years ago, I think? And that-
Eighteen.
Eighteen.
Pretty close.
Pretty close.
I ain't involved with the wall.
That's right. Could it happen again? Maybe, maybe from a pedestrian standpoint, you could get that. But at an accurate crossing with pedestrians, that might be okay today as well. But I don't think we'll get anything internally, like in through here for a crossing, just knowing railroads and how they operate, but.
Thank you.
Yep. So maybe reactions to the south growth area ideas here tonight?
I think along the rail corridor there, along the rail corridor, I don't know, any single-family housing is really an appropriate thing as far as a buffering area.
You're talking about, right?
Yeah, basically. That's a good place for the light commercial or density housing, or maybe a property value, is it so important?
It could be. I think this is challenged a little bit with access, cause we really can't get into the site till up in here, then we're backtracking quite a bit ways to get in that. Maybe it wants to be a slightly intenser use there? Maybe townhomes make some sense?
I think that access is a good buffer too for the single-family homes that maybe are a little farther away from the tracks.
Yeah.
I had a similar thought with respect to the high, high-tension power lines. So option two there showing all the order along ten between the power lines and ten, to me is a better fit for the same reasons as, you know, sure, I don't know anybody who wants to spend a significant amount of money on a home that's underneath the big power lines.
Right. Yep, that's fair. Do I have the, we'll see if the overlays and the parks are working, so you can kind of see that system. I touched again. I, I think the combination of the collector roadways and the role that they play for circulation for bikes and pets is also important. But within each of these greenway areas, we are also anticipating naturalized trail movement that would work through, through all of these trails. So you can see the dashed lines on there, following the county roads and the collector roads, but also sort of this organic set of trails that works its way, obviously avoids the wetlands, but works its way on those more public sort of edges or within conservation easements, what have you, how that gets integrated. But you can see that broad stretch really east to west through the center of the southern growth area. We think that's a huge just amenity for the entire district, and to preserve and enhance that with trails and interconnected open space would be great for a future growth area component in this stretch, so. Any other thoughts land use-wise, particularly maybe allocation of, you know, the commercial node at Marsh Lake? Thoughts and reactions to that? Higher density here, or maybe the different nodes?
Just one quick one. Did you look at the difference between the two from a population perspective or a tax basis? Tax basis between the two?
I don't think we ran the cows on a, on a tax-based perspective. Population base, I think they're gonna be similar, mostly because of the extraction of some of the small-lot, single-family into which is a smaller percentage or proportion of medium or higher-density residential there. So we try to keep that balanced. But I didn't want the tax-based numbers. I mean, acreage-wise, we're probably looking at, that might be about forty acres, give or take, no. That's about thirty, thirty-five acres right in that area. That is a transition from urban, more urban housing, urban village to jobs or flex. So that might be the big swing between the concepts.
But if we're talking about retailer, light and dust rule, obviously there's gonna be different taxes.
Correct, yeah.
That might be something that would be helpful.
Yes.
For some people.
Collector streets, how big are they?
We have those identified as, I think eighty foot, seventy-five, eighty-foot right-of-way corridors. They're still in flux. I think we're working with Karen Bennett a little bit more on the details of those. But curb, curb line, I don't think we've pinned down yet, but we're anticipating some would have trails on both sides. Some, depending upon the shape or configuration of developable land, would have driveway access to them. That would be rare, I think. But predominantly, they're there to get people out of those developed areas, out of the-
You, you said seventy-eight, seventy-eight feet. How does that compare to Marsh Lake Road? With what?
How wide is Marsh Lake Road proposed?
I can't answer that. I don't know what is proposed.
Oh.
So right-of-way currently has been talked about, it's a hundred and thirty feet in width. Pavement section's still kind of up in the air, determining on whether it's a three-lane roadway or a two-lane.
What's three-lane?
How many, how many feet? It's probably in that thirty-six to forty feet pavement, depending, again, depending on what that final design looks like. So the collectors are significantly smaller than that. So the blue lines that you'd see on the, the images on the lower screen here, those being collectors is, as Brian mentioned, eighty feet wide. I think we've talked about something like a thirty-some odd foot width.
The kind of road would be Red Fox.
Or Lakes Parkway.
So it'd be thirty-one an hour speed limit?
Yes.
Right. And the other roadways being like seventy feet right-of-way, think about like Seventy-Eight Street, Cochia, those kind of room movement streets. Where they're still gonna carry pretty decent traffic, but maybe with some of the design characteristics, they aren't encouraging people to get above kind of that reasonable thirty-five mile-an-hour speed kind of thing.
Well, and let's talk about that. I mean, from a design standpoint, you know, typically the narrower the roadway, the slower traffic would move. And the tighter you can make that right-of-way, it affords, you know, the transaction or sale of land that's more developable at that time. So there's a balance between what the function of those roadways want to be. They, obviously they need to move cars, but they're there to, you know, move people. It's a multimodal type of roadway, right? So we'll have trails for bikes, we'll have pedestrians as a part of that. And we wanna have, still move cars off to the collector roadway system, so. People see those as narrower roadways, or do they see those differently? Any thoughts or reactions to those? Are they treated? Are they well landscaped? Are they, are there buffer edges to it? Are they aligned with landscaping to sort of create the edge between backyards of homes, or?
Well, it's residential.
Yeah.
So there's a big safety thing around here. At least that's a trend at this moment.
Intersections, sightlines, enhanced pedestrian crossings.
Right.
Yeah.
And I think landscaping, it gives it the mold where people remember, oh, this is a residence, it's not a highway.
Right.
There are trees, there are paths alongside of it.
Sure.
They start to remember that they're supposed to be going the speed limit.
Yep. Boulevard trees help with that. Pedestrian-scale lighting helps with that, yeah.
Is there a way when we do that though, that we're committing that we're not gonna be, you know, putting another lane in their sandbox for their kids? You know? Are we, uh, we're, are we committing that we won't be expanding that road?
Oh, I see what you're saying.
And doing those, those residences will be disservice.
Sure.
By, we're planning.
So there's an element of, once we kind of decide what this looks like, we will do our own traffic modeling to see what the traffic volumes would be on this road, to projected traffic volumes, to make sure that we aren't potentially planning for something that it will be a disservice to the houses around it. But generally, based on what we're seeing on the county road system, I don't see a scenario where we won't be okay at two lanes. The tricky part will be the intersections and whether we wanna be planning for left-turn lanes or right-turn lanes and, and how we deal with those key intersection areas, whether we plan for roundabouts. Those are some of the things we've talked about amongst ourselves as a staff.
How about the thought of that conservation residential idea in the center of the site? I know, and we talked a little bit about at least this idea here making sense between the transmission line and highway ten. How, how do people envision that conservation lot pattern? I mean, is that, is that a desire from the community standpoint? An opportunity to sort of allow for one acre, maybe two-acre lots that are privately owned? Perhaps having conservation easement over the top of them to preserve open space. I think our intent was to not see that area in the center of that site get masqueraded and built out to a typical suburban residential lot standard that there's just a higher quality of design standard that goes to those lots. And attention to detail and care and all those are developed. We can articulate that more, but I think those are the early thoughts about how we were treating that. How do people see that?
I think large lots are actually nice. We've kind of gotten away from it to look at where the, our cop line, the conference of, our committee has gone as far as planning commission, a large lot's now being eighty feet.
Yeah.
Meeting a small lot sixty feet. And we've just, we've gotten away from some of the historically larger lots the community was founded on over the years. So having some large lots available to the community in time would be funny and preserve some of the green space.
Yeah, as a planning commissioner, I, and I'm conservative when it comes to land, so I love lots like that cause it keeps the natural amenity of the, the land there, and that's what we're about here. You know, trying to preserve some of that for aesthetic value and it's just a healthy thing in a neighborhood.
Yeah.
To have some space. Rather than the large lots, maybe you cluster homes and then preserve areas.
I think that's another aspect to it, for sure. That you could still do, maybe you can do a hundred and fifty-foot type of lots that have enough depth to them, but they still feel private for that large lot owner. But you can give away a bigger piece of land that that's more in a conservation play or community, it's owned by the community, owned by the city, that you can allow a passive trail network through or something along those lines. It could, I think we could look at it that both ways, understand what that means.
So the density wouldn't change, it's just the gathering of the housing.
Right.
Or clustered conservation.
Yeah, I mean, the way we looked at that was, everything in that stripe is really sort of, it's upland, but it's, you know, it's old-growth hardwood forest in there. It's really beautiful land, you know, it's rolling topography. So we were trying to protect the masquerading of that, and you could do that two ways. You could scatter home sites within there, or you could take a portion of that and put more traditional lots in there and preserve the rest. So I think there's two ways to approach how we go about that. Anything else on these? Generally like the idea of more employment in that corner? This idea? Especially in that triangle. Let's talk about that triangle, ten and eleven. Yeah?
No.
General head nods. Okay. I'm gonna keep us rolling. We're gonna go right to the west growth area. Rick, you got that image of the, um, yeah, so this is sort of the underlying aerial photo of what we looked at. Go to the next one. Here you can see sort of the patterning of those wetland areas. There's a few nodes, or, or excuse me, areas that are sort of old-growth hardwood forests that are matched with that. We looked a little more closely at the patterns of drainage through there. There's a talk of a potential wetland restoration project. I'll talk about that here in a second as well. Utilities are gonna come from the north and the east. We need to figure out a way to get across that property and into that land, and then, you know, we'll have to work with Kara and others about how we think about long-term retrofit of some of those well-inseptic sites on the north side of Pearson's Lake over time. But let's, let's go to the next one. So land use-wise, again, commercial uses, again, those larger, more community-based uses at a node near highway five for the most part, supported with higher-density residential, medium-density residential. Neighborhood commercial at the Marsh Lake Road extension and Lake Town Road, I'll talk about that. Again, predominantly low-density residential throughout, and then that idea again of a broad interconnected open space network. So on the plan today, there's a couple of different options that are being studied in that location for the Marsh Lake Road extension. This is one that the county has looked at to continue up through here. There's currently right-of-way designated in this area, and then it would follow a portion of Teller's Road through here, and then it would shift and come up and align with what is Airport Road further to the west as we get over into the township and out towards Oconia. But this is generally a configuration that will, at least this stretch that we're working through, I think there's an option in that second concept we'll talk about that deflects that road onto the existing transportation pattern. The light green again, you can see is that open space network. One area right in here, was talked about as a potential wetland restoration project with the Watership District. That could be great for water quality as, as that sort of ditch, you can see it here lightly underneath, runs right down into the lake. There's a lot of sediment, and you can see it on the north side there with the reeds along the edge of the lake. Roadway network-wise, Lake Town would stay in its existing, Lake Town Road would stay in existing configuration, and then sort of modify itself as we get, this is the Teller's roadway alignment here currently today. I'll realign itself back to where it's at, its current configuration. It does this sort of angular shape today. Re-alignment of that for a more direct route that would continue and pick up on its existing network. Then we have an interconnected collector roadway system here. You can see again with those roadways. Land use-wise, commercial, about twenty acres of community commercial in that area off of highway five, supported with higher-density and medium-density residential. And then the one node here at Lake Town and Marsh Lake Road of additional density. But this concept also looked at a, a lakefront park approach. So the connection of really interconnected greenway all the way through and down. And when we look at the open space network, we talked about the opportunity for separate separated crossings, particularly, you know, in areas right in here to get across that Marsh Lake Road, and also to interconnect with what could be the, the future regional trail connection on that old railbed line that runs through this stretch and would connect back up into the downtown. Concept two. Let's talk about the differences for that. Generally, some of the same similarities, predominantly low-density residential throughout. An aspect for more increased housing density near highway five with a smaller area of, of commercial in that area. This gray line here is a, I think it's a gas pipeline, if I'm not mistaken, right through here. So that's sort of another edge or a determinant of development. Uh, so that's sort of another edge or a determinant of development where that can go, dictate some access and some circulation components as well. We've added some additional areas of potential, uh, medium density residential along those larger roadway networks. And then the big change, um, would be to do sort of an interconnected roundabout loop off of Marsh Lake Road, up County Road forty-three, and then connect back. You can see the hatchway drew in right there, that would continue its extension through. So, mostly driven by discussions, I think, with landowners in this area, not to have that roadway go through, uh, but I think those conversations are still under discussion, if I'm not mistaken, with the county, on how they plan to go forward with that. Uh, one of the topics we discussed a lot with the, uh, the property owner meeting that we had here, we had a lot of residents on the north side of Pearson's who attended that. Some of the concerns, um, they had were a discussion of this interconnectivity. We showed an additional roadway connection here, primarily for fire access and being able to get to and, and, uh, have fire access to, to those areas rather than on cul-de-sacs, uh, and be able to upgrade potentially roads with, um, new infrastructure that could come into the future. Their well and, or their septic field sits out here today. A lot of the conversation was, you know, we enjoy the quiet peacefulness of that cul-de-sac. Uh, maybe there's options for, um, uh, like a trail connection that would also serve as fire protection there. We also talked about the opportunity to sort of route a loop back in other direction in that location. And this was a group that we did talk about areas like this as a potential waterfront park on the west side of the lake, or even further south. Um, that might be more paired with, um, County Road ten play, and maybe it's more of a community athletic component at the same time. So, some interesting conversations from the landowners in that, um, group there as well. I think one of the other differences here, you know, we have parks sort of integrated in concept one with the open space network. We're trying to do the same thing here. Here, we're looking at doing park preservation areas where we've got some of the large old growth forests, or we have areas, this is a, uh, beautiful pasture area where it's all mowed down and it's hundred-year-old oaks set above that. But looking at that as a targeted location for a potential community park right against the regional trail corridor, so. A unique opportunity to preserve some of the features there. And then, obviously, how this grows and evolves will do, will have a lot to understanding the Teller's roadway component when folks choose to develop, how that comes into play. Uh, we talked a lot about how the collector roadway system currently is showing through some of those exception properties, is there a way to better reflect, uh, these staying more long-term? And we show sort of the alignment of Teller's, Teller's Road being there for as much of that length as possible, so we can still work with that development pattern. Uh, maybe look at extending that and rerouting some of that roadway alignment here, the better. Uh, preserve some of the existing, the smaller two, three, five acre homesteads that are out there right now, so. Where's forty-three? Forty-three is right here, that runs up north like this. So Pearson's extends further south, and then Marsh Lake is right over here. This would be the geometry of Marsh Lake Road as it comes into County Road forty-three.
I thought forty-three was right along Pearson's Lake, yeah?
It does, it does, further south. Um...
Oh.
Further south, right through here. So that dot on the map right here is the same as that dot right there. So this is forty-three running, here's Pearson's Lake right here, runs down like this. These are sort of, how could I do this, like this? Kind of like that.
Oh, yeah.
Does that make sense?
So this is, uh, primarily low density. How did, if, if we took the two thousand thirty plan and you had that here, what colors was the two thousand thirty plan for this same area?
Almost all yellow.
Almost all yellow. We didn't, we had a few, uh, again, kind of that placeholder thing that was done in the two thousand thirty plan for commercial nodes that would be at some of those strategic intersections that are still represented here, but we didn't have a suggestion of kind of that medium or high density in any of this western growth area. So something that's been talked about a lot at the steering committee level was, again, how do we position people along some of those primary corridors so that we're still leading people towards downtown? So the evolution of kind of that node up on Highway five wasn't so much to say, we need more commercial because downtown's small, it was more, let's put more people out in this area so that we still feed that downtown area, as people go to jobs, go to, um, grocery stores and that kind of thing. And that's maybe more of a convenience service play for commercial than what we have downtown.
So there's a, a density goal that has to be met with the comprehensive plan, right?
Yeah, an average of three units per acre.
So, does this calculate to three units per acre if you take the whole global plan?
Yeah, I'm not sure what the exact number is, but...
And we might, we might be a touch above that with some of the, depending on which options of which growth areas we're looking at, in some cases, we're maybe overplanning a little to keep, you know, some of those sensitive areas around the natural resources a little bit lower density.
Hey Ben, what number are you using then for the two thousand forty, for population, for the two thousand forty plan, what number did you plug in?
Right now, we're trying to be somewhere in that seventeen-five to twenty thousand range to kind of overplan land area wise where we go when we submit. When you get to the preferred plan, after we get all the public comment on these options and we get a preferred plan, we're still going to have to identify what land areas get us to fifteen thousand four hundred is the Met Council number for us, but we're, we're trying to show more color than what they have so that we can be prepared if we grow faster than what they think. Good question.
See Ben, as we annex, uh, part of Lake Town, do we know where the, the school district boundaries are?
Uh, we do, yep. Um, most of this west area is in, I think almost all, but maybe two pieces are in the La Conia School District. On the south area, that is all predominantly one twenty.
And conversations with District one ten as far as any growth or expansion of the school system?
Yep.
In this area, is that, is there any, any discussions at all?
Heard a very brief conversation with them, uh, about future elementary schools, and I think part of why we're starting to show that commercial node at Marsh Lake Road in Lake Town is that that may also be that next potential place for an elementary school down the road. There's, in a, so, La Conia School, there's, District in general is kind of where Chaska, before it became Eastern Carver County, was a long time ago, where they're still centrally focused, their effort on additional elementaries in La Conia themselves, but they are thinking about, as the district between us and the city of La Conia grows, it makes a lot of sense logistically to start placing some of those elementaries closer to us.
Right, I'm just looking at the corner, um, what will be Lake Town and ten?
Yep.
Uh, and then in, in conjunction with a community lake park. I think it would be a kind of a nice combination, right?
Oh, this area?
Yes.
Yep. Sorry, for those that couldn't see it. Um, no. You keep a nice mind. Right down here. Any other thoughts, reactions to the concepts, ideas? Otherwise, we can go to the next steps, we'll tell you where we're going with this next and what you can expect to see moving forward.
Anything else? Okay, so on October twenty-fifth, Wednesday the twenty-fifth, we have a week from Wednesday. We have open house here in this room from four to seven o'clock. There's not a formal presentation, but essentially we'll have a lot of these same boards and other ones here in the room for folks to come by, and they can speak with us from the consultant teams, city staff and so forth. And we'll understand where we've been, where we're going, some of the main choices here for the comprehensive plan. Essentially, all this content here is going to be distilled into more people who can come by and react to. We also have a survey we're going to have available for folks here, paper form. That survey will also go online to get kind of a broad, big picture reaction to alternatives and general directions for growth and change, options for the comprehensive plan. So it's a big day next Wednesday the twenty-fifth, so, you know, Ben, you have publicity going out, and, you know, folks here on these boards, if they want to get the word out as well, that'd be great for next Wednesday.
I see.
And then, November fifteenth, we'll meet with the steering committee, that's, um, in November to review a draft preferred plan. So essentially, the next several weeks, we'll be pretty busy here getting input from the public here next week and through the next few weeks after that, coming back with a preferred direction. So essentially, for like the west area, the south area, it will be down to one plan and one land use plan for citywide, and one option for parks, one option for transportation in terms of the major thrust. You know, the details may continue to massage a little bit as we go through the next few months. But the general direction of the major choices should be figured out, at least, you know, post a preferred direction by then, by November, get direction from the steering committee, then come back, um, see those guys in mid-December, and that's essentially a prep for a final community engagement, a similar kind of engagement probably early January or early to mid-January to get, um, influence the public concerning the preferred plan. And also importantly, at that meeting, talk a lot about implementation, how we all make this kind of fruition, you know, kind of, you know, nuts and bolts a bit more, things that affect the city staff and, you know, priorities, things people are going to focus on here versus there. A lot of this schedule will really come into play there as we go into the first part of the year. And then again, from, from there, after January, it's really getting down to finalizing the document and, you know, go through adoption with the various boards and committees here, and formal submission to Met Council. So, quite a bit coming in the next few months. Um, Ben and Dad?
I don't, but I think in close, I think Lori?
We just, yeah, just real quick, um, before we go, thank you for taking time and being here tonight. If you are willing, we just want to go around the room and share one thing that you've heard tonight that you're excited is being included in the comp plan going forward. And I'll share mine to give you just the thirty seconds to think about it. I love that I heard a lot of talk about downtown continuing to be a gathering place and a home for community events. So I didn't more care, but maybe we'll just go this way and go around. And if you want to pass, that's fine, but it can just be a very quick share.
People care about transportation, that excites me. And so are...
You may be...
That's true.
Nobody else like that.
I like the fact that there's growth, that, that, that it's growth, that we're not going to just stay as we are, that there's growth development, both residentially, commercially, all those types of things, and those options are open.
I like the idea, I mean, we're going to grow no matter what, but we're thinking of conservation. We're saving some of this nice land we have to be observed and used for wildlife, and going forward, we're not just taking, scraping the land and putting up housing just to get taxes. I like the idea that we're saving some of the, the natural amenities of the property.
I think among all the discussion of growth, what I'm most excited about is the high value still placed on gathering places and coming together, because I think as we grow as a community, it's going to be needed more than ever.
I like the fact that we're all here working together collaboratively and getting along and sharing views from different points and different angles and perspectives and all kind of the same kind of direction.
I'll use the planners or the placemaking comments that were made tonight. So, a lot of the topics that we brought up all were described by you all when you were sharing thoughts about what's unique about Victoria, whether we're talking about downtown or some of the parks, the lakes. I think all that was really encouraging, that a lot of the dialogue is all about, how is this plan still just an extension of Victoria?
I'm excited about the comprehensiveness of just covering everything and making sure it's well thought out and that we've covered every aspect of people's lives.
And that's kind of what I was thinking too, that, um, we have so much open land, and rather than messing it up, you know, let's do it right and make it as beautiful and as useful and as, um, for the next twenty, forty years. Won't be around for it, but go for it.
Might be.
Yeah, I don't know.
Um, I like the fact that we talked about not expanding Highway five and fewer double lane roads. I think once you put a double lane road in, you just put up the advertisement for strip mall in your town. I think you need to lean on Lori a little bit. She sat through Chanhassen and saw some of that and what we can do to avoid it. Um, tell us. I guess that's like five drinks, but...
Process comment, I like the fact that we've got residents, uh, landowners, uh, council members, staff, uh, our professional consult team, park and rec, uh, planning commission, whatever else. Uh, just being able to have that interconnectedness, I think, is extremely valuable.
I echo so many of the other things Lori said. I just really appreciate smart strategic planning. It, it just goes so far, and it's a great thing.
Yeah, and I think that the natural resource-based, um, thoughtfulness is important today and in the future.
I'm excited about a greater mix of housing types.
I think it's, I think it's neat that we all recognize that Victoria is unique in so many ways, and we're all here to try to preserve that uniqueness, and I think it's kind of neat.
Everybody said what can be said. I, I look at the process, and I'm, I'm so respectful and, uh, in awe of the process, because this is serious business. This, we're not doing this plan as an academic exercise to satisfy the Metropolitan Council. We're really hitting this hard, and we're trying our darndest to come up with a good plan. And the truth of the matter is, if you've been around here for a decade or two on, on some of these commissions, this will be used as a number one tool in all our decisions in the next ten years. So, to me, that's what I hear. I see really good quality effort and, uh, and everybody's taking this seriously. This is not an academic thing that we're doing because, because we got to satisfy the Met Council. This is, this is a tool that we're going to use.
Well, when you go this late, you know, all the good ideas have been taken. Purely personal, I'm a, I'm a huge lake, water person, full of lakes, love the water. And I've always thought it's a bit ironic to live in this great city and we're the city of lakes and parks, and frankly, we don't have very good access to water, and a lot of it's not very good quality water. And so the, even just the thought of having something available to us on like Pearson's Lake is super exciting, it's just great.
The thing that I like is, you know, both this committee and the steering committee, everybody gets along. They, they give their viewpoints, but there's no one person that's being the strong arm saying, this is what I want. You know, it's a collaboration of everybody.
Well, he's, you're, he's huge, who's going to disagree with you?
Why miss that council member's giggle?
So many good thoughts. Uh, again, I think that the collaborative nature of this, and people care about this community, and to echo, uh, Councilman Gregory, it's a special place we live in, and, and everybody coming here, putting their time and energy into keeping it that way. We recognize growth is inevitable, and I always think of the, the role of government to be as unobtrusive, but to, as possible, but to help make sure that as we grow up, that we do it in a way that we can be good friends and good neighbors and, and things are thoughtful. But that, the overall theme of everything I heard tonight was, keep Victoria, Victoria. Be true, know who we are and be true to that, and, and help guide that growth, that inevitable growth in a way that, you know, we can look back twenty years from now and still feel like it's a good community, and we like to gather and enjoy each other's company, and, and, you know, it's a good place to come home at the end of the day. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Rob.
Thanks, everybody. Appreciate the conversation tonight. You have a great weekend, thank you.